Is Warren here?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting. This is October 1st. Where did the year go? Wow, here we are, October 1st. So I hear it echo. We're good with that? You got that? Okay. So, hello? Can't hear me. Come back up. Testing. Nope.
Yeah, it's good.
Is it good? No, it's not good.
Testing one-two, one-two. It's all of us.
Hello? Does yours work?
Testing one-two.
One-two?
Testing.
It's working.
Yours is working.
And testing.
So wait, so mine works? It's working? Is it working? Are we working now? Okay. Very good. We still hear an echo, but it's better. Okay. Okay. Here we go. So, thank you all for being here, and I know you all want to get out to your boats and your pools this afternoon because it's beautiful weather, so we'll try to get through this as soon as we can. We start out with our communications to the City Commission, and there are two communications. One from the Planning and Zoning Department. Hello, Doctor. One from the Planning and Zoning Department regarding a motion made by Marilyn Mamanu and seconded by Jay Scheckman, and this concerns regarding the Tree Preservation Ordinance. Does someone from staff want to step forward and explain a little bit about that to us? Al Battle.
Al Battle, Development Services. So at the same meeting in which the Planning and Zoning Board approved the Planning and the Tree Preservation Ordinance amendments that we have on the agenda this evening, they also made a communication to the Commission for two reasons. One, to have this particular item be on the next available agenda. It is on tonight's agenda. One of the other elements of the conversation was around the aspect of incentives, particularly preservation incentives and incentives with respect to development. And so we have included some level of incentives in the document that you have this evening. We'll let you know there's some disagreement between staff and the advisory group that we've been working with on that particular aspect, and we're willing to continue to work on that item, but at this point, what we've presented is staff's best effort, and I think that's part of the communication as well.
So when you say incentives, you mean like fines if people take down trees that they're not supposed to? Or what do you mean by incentives?
Planting incentives, incentives that would induce more preservation or hopefully allow for developers to save more trees on development sites. So one of them in particular is giving credit or value type of credit with respect to types of trees on site. So if a developer was able to save an old grove tree, a large old grove tree, we'd be able to redo that. The proposal offered by the advisory group was to have a deeper incentive with respect to how many trees would have to be replanted on the site. So in some respects, staff is not in full agreement with that approach in full, but we do provide some incentives that we think get closer to what we're trying to do from a preservation of tree canopy standpoint. And also, one of the fundamental reasons why we're not willing to go as far in terms of the aggressive nature, or at least how aggressive you can go with incentives at this point, is that, as you may remember, Mayor and the Commission, there is an urban floristry master plan effort underway. We believe the results of that particular effort will also provide us some opportunity to properly prescribe incentives, and we think doing so before that particular project is done would be a little bit premature.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Battle? There being none, thank you, Al.
Thank you.
And moving on to the Education Advisory Board, there's a communication by a motion made by Ms. Rosenbaum, who's here today in her beautiful Mediterranean-inspired outfit. Push the button at the bottom of the speaker.
I just got back from doing the community Santiago, so I feel very Mediterranean-like. Good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commissioners, Herbst, Pissman, and Durman. I come before you this afternoon as Vice Chair for the Educational Advisory Board Committee regarding the Broward County Public School Board's redefining initiative in under-enrolled schools. I'll make it really short and sweet. We had a very lively discussion with much passion and great fervor, and we collectively came upon, we collectively and unanimously agreed upon the following, and we ask that you follow these recommendations if the Commission so sees it fit. We are advocating that the City of Fort Lauderdale school site should not be sold to developers. If a campus is slated for closure, that the land shall be retained by the school board to preserve the opportunity for neighborhood schools in the future. We emphatically believe that the community outreach engagement is paramount and critical and must occur with individual schools and the surrounding neighborhoods prior to any announcement of the plan to redesign, repurpose, or close any specific schools within the city. And finally, we encourage and believe that family literacy and early childhood learning centers should be identified and considered when considering redesign, repurposing of any city schools. I hope that you guys will, I hope that you, as a Commissioner, will consider this and go forward.
Anyone have any comments?
I do, Mayor. Thank you, and thank you, Debbie. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Commissioner, or Vice Mayor, rather.
No problem. So I just wanted to ask Susan about this because, correct me if I'm wrong, the school board is, I think, having an important meeting on October 8th where they're going to be discussing a lot of issues like this and maybe even school closures, and we don't meet again until the 15th.
Correct.
So are we going to see something later tonight as a walk-on maybe because for us to be able to?
That's what we're hoping.
So staff has prepared a walk-on resolution that reflects the three items that the EAB included in their communication, and then we put in an attachment with some specific examples of things that staff would advocate for under the umbrella of these three items. So yes, we would have a walk-on resolution that we will provide if the Commission so desires.
Okay. So do we need to discuss that if we so desire that for tonight, or do we just discuss it as the walk-on comes to us tonight, or how do you want to do that?
Well, the floor is open now to discuss it, so this is part of the communication, so now would be the time to discuss it. Does anyone have any suggestions or thoughts about the three recommendations that are being proffered by the Education Advisory Board? Anyone else want to say anything? I have some things I'd like to say.
But just, I know you, but just once again, I know this is a very important item. It's coming up tonight as a walk-on, as Vice Mayor mentioned. Just, once again, just to summarize the three, just, I know they weren't paying attention. These are very important items.
Very much so.
I just want to go through it one more time.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. We are recommending that the schools not be sold, A, the schools not be sold to developers, and if a campus is slated for closure, that the land shall be retained by the school board to be and to preserve the opportunity for neighborhood schools in the future. Number two, we believe that the community outreach engagement is paramount and critical and must occur with individual schools and their surrounding neighborhoods prior to any announcement of a plan to redesign, repurpose of any school closing. And we highly encourage and believe that family literacy and early childhood learning centers should be identified and considered when redesigning and repurposing school campuses.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I would like to add to the conversation. Thank you to the board for addressing this and coming up with these four points. I support it, and I do, you're on point is where I'm going with this. I love the direction that you're going in because to be, when you break it down, the schools are actually, that have been identified before are in District 3, and these are concerns that we do have concerning the schools. And to just put it out there that, you know, let's keep these properties because we do know that the enrollment will increase again.
We need them from the neighborhoods.
And we need it from the neighborhood, and then looking to the future, what's going on right now, we do know that with the way that individuals are moving into our state, into our city, we're going to need these schools again.
We are going to need these schools.
So let's not deplete what we have and keep a bank, in a sense, to be sure that we can reopen if it comes to this.
That's why it was really important for us that we not sell them, you know, not sell any of the property, that we keep it within the school board. That way, we can repurpose it within the neighborhood.
Thank you for your due diligence and your conversations with us.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any comments?
Mayor, I'll add to that. So, you know, my history with the school board goes back about 15 years from the Audit Committee and the Bond Oversight Committee, and during that period of time, I've seen school overcrowding and attempts to build more schools. And now we're at a point in time where we're looking to decrease the number of schools, and what that tells us is that demographics will change over time, and we're seeing a drop-off right now. But if we lose these properties now and we find ourselves in need 10 years from now to expand or acquire additional locations, it's going to be prohibitively expensive for the school district to be able to accomplish that. So I would echo the thoughts of the advisory board and my colleagues. I think it would be a mistake for us to lose these properties. We need to hang on to them, find a way to repurpose them in the meantime, but keep them in the inventory of the district so that they're available at a later point in time when they will be needed again. So thank you.
Okay. I think all those points have been well-taken. The thing is, first of all, thank you for your service on the committee. That's really important. Excuse me. And, you know, I live across the street from one of these schools that was slated to be closed, and, you know, in thinking about closing a school and creating a vacant space, of course, is never a good thing because all it does is attract vagrants, and so that's not good. And also, a lot of the neighborhoods have grown up and have been populated by families who expected to be living near their school and where kids walk to school and where parents can come at night or on weekends to events that take place, and they become gathering places. And I think it's imperative that the school board understand that dynamic and try not to interrupt it and to try to find ways to preserve it and improve upon it, especially in the two schools that are across from my Bennett Elementary and Sunrise Middle. The City of Fort Lauderdale has invested a significant amount of money in park space, both now and programmed to go into those schools, and they can't just abandon these places where we have invested a lot of money to enhance recreational activities for kids. And, you know, are we going to get refunded that money? I doubt it. So these are the kinds of things that have to be considered. So repurposing them, adult education, family literacy, all kinds of opportunities exist there that I think have been mentioned by other members of the Commission and the community to see what we can do to repurpose them. And as Commissioner Beasley Pittman said, bank the real estate because populations do change. We're seeing a lot of young families move into Fort Lauderdale, and, you know, the schools are going to be a necessary place. You can't sell them to developers anyway because they're not zoned for anything else but schools. So, you know, I think this community would be hard-pressed to think that any commission is going to change the zoning to multifamily or any kind of housing when they know they have a school zoning facility right in their front yard. So thank you for being a liaison to the issue and for really promoting the city's agenda, which of course is always to try to maintain the access to education that we now come to enjoy. Yes, Doctor?
I echo that. It's funny, same thing that my colleagues up here said, you know, you sell the land and you blink and you're going to need it again, and you're going to end up paying 10 times what you sold it for. So I agree that we keep it. And by the way, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you know this, all four of my children went to that school right by you, and unbeknownst to me, this is way before you were elected official, I think we used to wait in your driveway for them to get out of school. I apologize.
Yes, I still do.
I apologize. I realized years later where you live. I know exactly, but we used to visit you quite often.
It's always a challenge trying to back out.
I know. I know. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Moving on to CF1 Emergency Purchases. Who will be speaking to that? Would that be Allen, Dr. Gassman? Dr. Gassman?
Can people speak on the last?
I'm sorry?
Follow comment on the last.
Did you sign up?
I'm sorry.
In the same suit you were wearing last night? Did you go home last night?
I bought like three.
Oh, okay. Okay. If you'd like to come up and speak, come up.
All right. Chris Nelson. Hi, how's it going today, Commission and everybody? So with the Broward School Board, the thing is, is this board, and it's changed a lot over the past five years, but they've lost the public trust. They're under investigation constantly by the state. Five school board members were removed because of a grand jury report a couple of years ago, and unfortunately, the voters decided not to keep the very competent school board members who were appointed. So when the changing of the guard happens, the school board's going to revert a lot to what it was pre-2022. And, you know, I don't want to judge anybody before they get up there on that dais, but when it comes to these schools that they're trying to shut down, anything that Fort Lauderdale residents can do to protect the schools they love, Virginia Schumann Young, you saw the people show up. What did they do immediately after that group got in there? Almost the next day, they're like, oh, we're not going to close Virginia Schumann Young. Oh, no, 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 no. So the power of the community coming together and the city saying absolutely not, you're not going to shut these down. And by the way, there are some school board members who I'm curious about some of the contributions they've gotten from developers and their relationship with developers and their ideas for what can happen with these properties. Absolutely do not zone it for development. Do not let them bulldoze these schools. Don't let them do it. Don't let them do it. And also, just be very tough with them when it comes down to that, to make sure that they aren't going to close any schools or do anything that Fort Lauderdale residents, that the community, don't want. And think of ways that you can kind of, you know, make them not walk all over us because these places need to be preserved, and it's time to stand up. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay. Thank you. Now CF1. Dr. Gassman? Oh, who's? Colonel Dodd. Yes, sir. Front and center.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So this item is just an after-the-fact notification of two emergency purchases that we made. The first one was repairs to a wastewater gravity sewer main on Bayview Drive near 12th Street. The second one was a force main, again, in the wastewater system on Vista Mar Street. In order to conduct the repairs, we went to the city manager, got approval for an emergency purchase to bring contractors in right away, and those contractors helped us with tankering as well as doing the repairs due to the nature of the pipes, how deep they were and the watering requirements. the nature of the, the pipes, how deep they were and the watering requirements.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, I guess that's it.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to Business One, Fortify Lauderdale Presentation. Who will be presenting that?
Alan will lead it off. And then he has a team of folks coming up.
This is like an update of what's been going on?
That's correct.
Mayor, Commissioners, you remember last fall, we introduced the Fortify Lauderdale Program following the floods of April 2023. At that time, we presented 17 neighborhoods that had significant flooding that we identified as the next priority that we need to be looking at. So we've done a lot of analysis, working with Hazen and Sawyer, our stormwater consultant. I would like to give you an update as to where we are as far as that analysis and lay out the path forward. So, the majority of the presentation will be given by Rob Taylor, who's the Vice President that we work on for Stormwater Projects, and he's from Hazen and Sawyer.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners.
Welcome.
Thank you for the chance to come back and give you a little update on what's been going on relative to this since we met, I think, last November. Glad to be working here on the Fortify Lauderdale Program, particularly talking today about those Tranche Two Neighborhood Stormwater Improvement Projects. Agenda for the day, actually, we're going to start and give you just a little bit of an update on some of the original neighborhoods, the eight that we began with, talk about the Tranche Two neighborhoods, some of our data collection efforts associated with that, some of the conceptual approaches by neighborhood and project, talk a little bit about schedule and costs and some public outreach. And by all means, while questions is at the bottom there, if you have questions as we move through, feel free to ask them. So these are the original eight neighborhoods that started in the Stormwater Master Plan. The first seven of those, Edgewood, River Oaks, Dorsey River Bend, Durs, Progressive Village, Victoria Park, and Southeast Isles are being done under the Master Plan contract. And then the last of those, Melrose Manors and Riverland Civic Association was added later, is being done via separate contract with HDR, and I think they'll give a presentation relative to that after this one. A little update on where those eight neighborhood?
Go back. This is not, for some reason, I was trying to follow along, but I'm having some issues here. Okay, just go through them again real quick.
Okay, so we've got Edgewood and River Oaks down at the bottom of the screen. Then starting east and working our way west, Southeast Isles, Victoria Park, Progressive Village, Durs to the north, Dorsey River Bend immediately south of it, and then the Melrose Manors, Riverland Civic Association is the farthest west neighborhood that you see there.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, we're on.
And so here they are again. You see them, and, and the Edgewood Neighborhood Project is essentially complete, just wrapping up some loose ends there. The Osceola Creek dredging project, which is immediately adjacent to Edgewood, is again substantially, substantially complete, as is the underground utility portion of the River Oaks neighborhood. The River Oaks pump station projects are in construction, well on their way to being complete. I think we anticipate substantial completion toward the end of the year. The Durs neighborhood is well into construction, Dorsey River Bend just really getting started. We expect Progressive Village to go to bid in the fourth quarter here of 2024. Southeast Isles to go to bid in the third quarter of 2025. We have completed, as I know many of you know, the, a lot of the seawalls there as you go out, La Solis in the Isles area, including the Merle Fog Park seawall, which I know a number of you were at the ribbon cutting for, those are complete. And then the Victoria Park neighborhood, we expect probably the first quarter of 2025 that will go to bid.
Sure. Okay, I'll go back to one and two. Number two is River Oaks. And River Oaks, I understand you're just waiting, I mean, underground's there, you're waiting for, I mean, these are the worst hit areas, obviously it showed in last April. So the question is, you know, we're prepared for what might be coming down the pike. They were just waiting for the, the piping is there, just waiting for the pumps? And, and what's the, I mean, when will that be? You said coming up soon. Could you give me a little?
So, I think we anticipate substantial completion. I think the date is December 13th. And we're working to try to clear with Broward County so that as soon as we hit substantial completion, we'll be able to have those pumps operable and useful for whatever events may, you know, necessitate them.
And that system will be operational from that point forward?
That's the last piece of that River Oaks, Edgewood conglomerate, if you will.
Okay, now go back to Edgewood for a second. You did say the pumps are finished in Edgewood or?
There are no pumps in Edgewood. So the, the pumps, the pump station, the main pump station in River Oaks is the one that helps Edgewood as well. There's a large conveyance main that takes the drainage from Edgewood into the River Oaks system, and then that station pumps the runoff from both River Oaks and Edgewood.
And where's that, where's that going to be draining to?
Right. It goes into the South Fork of the New River.
So, I mean, so the South Fork Crest is, that's the limiting factor with that too?
Say that again?
If, if South Fork peaks, you have an event where that peaks.
So that's the, and that's the reason and the rationale, and you'll see when we get in Tranche Two, there are a number of pump stations proposed, and that's what we need to overcome that high elevated condition in the, whether it's the, the South Fork of the New River, the North Fork of the River, any place where we can have a tidal condition that will no longer allow us to discharge that water via gravity, that's where we need the pumps to add energy to be able to discharge.
Where we go, Edgewood and, you don't mind me asking some of these, do you, Mr. Mayor?
You're asking actually the questions I was going to ask. So, did you look at my cheat sheet?
Oh, no, no, no. Edgewood and River Oaks, I mean, and I know there's canals, some, there's some drainage with the airport, they have a whole system in there, F dot with I-95. Do we utilize any of that stuff for, for drainage in Edgewood and River Oaks? Or that's, that's something that's not allowed by us?
All of those systems contribute to the Osceola Creek. So, the western portion of Edgewood drains into Osceola Creek, a portion of the airport drains into Osceola Creek, portions of DOT's system drain into Osceola Creek. So, it is a shared system amongst those various entities.
And let me ask you one other question here. We're redoing certain things. For instance, Floyd Hall Park is one of the things we're doing, and some of the things we're thinking of, of incorporating it is, is unique resiliency where they could be using that as drainage underneath that. Is that something that was built into what you're doing here that could tie in?
They, they aren't necessarily in these projects now, but we are, I, I think that being able to put storage into public spaces, whether it's above ground, underground, is going to be important to us, you know, citywide, countywide, from a resilience standpoint. So I think where we have those opportunities, it's good to make use of them.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up with a couple of things you said. So, let's go back to Osceola Creek, that poor little creek that seems to be, you know, the receptor of so many different flows of water that come when a storm materializes in our city. So on April of 2023, we found that Osceola Creek was expected to absorb all the runoff from the airport, from 595, as well as from the neighborhood that, that it's adjacent to. And we discovered that that was impossible, that, and I see that you're dredging Osceola Creek, but dredging is not enough to absorb the kind of rainfall. Not that we expect 26 inches of rain in five hours ever again, but it will happen, something will happen. And, and in June of this year, we had another significant rainfall and where we again experienced a significant amount of flooding. So, I understand, I've spoken with Mr. Dodd, and, and I understand there are conversations going forward. But the gravity system that is employed with Osceola Creek is clearly inadequate to absorb all the runoff that's coming from the, from the highway, from, from the airport, and from the neighborhood. And in the end, the neighborhood gets the brunt of it because no one's living on the North Runway, no one's living on 595, but everyone's living in Edgewood. And that's the, that's the travesty that we suffered as a community. And I know we have a drainage system that's being installed, I know we have pump stations being installed along the route. But that is not, is not enough because where is it pumping into? And we've been told, maybe you can reiterate it, how many inches of rainfall per 24-hour period will this system be able to absorb? Can you, do you know off that, know that off the top of your head?
Lucia, do you have any idea what the, well, I, let me start by saying, the, the portion of the Osceola Creek that has been improved to this point is what I'll call kind of the middle section. It's the part that's directly adjacent to Edgewood to the west. There is a whole other portion of that to the north that meanders its way through that area north of State Road 84, ultimately goes under, under I-95.
And makes it to River Oaks. Part of it is in River Oaks. Osceola go into?
Yeah, it, yeah, it, it kind of weaves its way there to the west of, on the west side of River Oaks. That whole portion of the Osceola Creek is in dire need of being upgraded as well. That is a, that is certainly a problem.
What does upgraded mean?
I, I think it needs, it's aged, I think it needs to be pretty much retooled, it needs to be dredged. The, the slopes of it need to be hardened. They're right now, I think, very suspect. And, you know, the, the wrong event could cause that area to be really impeded as far as the ability to even carry the flow that it's carried thus far in the events that we've seen.
Is that it, is that all that in Fort Lauderdale? Or does it cross over into other municipal jurisdictions?
It is all in the city of Fort Lauderdale, but we had a conversation, Dr. Gassman put together a call that had all of the entities that we just talked about that are using it and some others to start talking.
Well, it's become a dumping ground for all of those sources. And we know when, when we had that April storm, there was water up to your chest in the runway and they couldn't, they couldn't, you know, use, utilize it. But eventually it drained into the Osceola Creek, which then pushed its way into the neighborhood. So, do we build a wall there to prevent the airport from draining into the creek? I mean, this is not, this can't happen again, you know? And I don't know whether, whether these plans, while well intentioned, are sufficient to be able to anticipate the kind of storm that we could again get. I mean, if we had a hurricane, God forbid, like the folks in the Big Bend just suffered, I don't think we would have been, even if all systems in place, I don't think we would have ever been able to really address and absorb the kind of rainfall that these folks experienced up north. So, speak a little bit to that if you can.
So, again, the, to me, there are three parts of that system. There is a portion of the airport, it's not the entire airport, that is permitted to discharge across 595 into what we call the Passive Park there. It's a BCAD, Broward County Aviation Department parcel that's at the very southwest corner of the Edgewood neighborhood. A part of what we believe needs to happen, and we've had a conversation with the folks at BCAD, is that we need to be able to attenuate, store, slow down some of that flow on that parcel before it gets into the upper end of Osceola Creek, the part that goes around the west side of Edgewood. Then there's the middle part, which?
So you have water coming off the airport, it's going onto 595, it's going onto Perimeter Road, heading into Edgewood. Where would you, you said, where would you store it?
It's, there are, there are pipes that carry it across the 595 area south of, of the, just north of the airport into this park parcel that is at the southwest corner of Edgewood. Then it goes through a series of pipes and open ditches and?
Underground.
Underground.
Okay.
Part of it above ground, the ditch part piped underground. And then it finally goes into the very upper end of Osceola Creek as we know it, where we see an open water body adjacent to the Edgewood neighborhood. We want and have asked that the county consider building a berm that would separate the southern portion of the Edgewood neighborhood from that park parcel so that that water is stored and regulated and it's discharged into the upper end of the Osceola Creek. Then this, this northern part of the Osceola Creek, which ultimately discharges into the South Fork of the New River, has to be upgraded. And that's where I think, Dr. Gassman's behind me, that's where we put together this call to try to talk about how that might be a cooperative process amongst all of these parties.
When you say upgraded, does that mean ability to store, handle more water?
It needs to be able to convey more water and it needs to be able to convey it reliably. Need to make sure that we don't have to worry about the fact that in any given major storm event like this, we could have a portion of the walls which hold together that channel to collapse into that channel and further impede the ability for water to drain through there. So, it needs to have its conveyance capacity improved and it needs the reliability of that conveyance to, to be upgraded.
Dr. Gassman, it looks like you, you're itching to, to jump on in.
Dr. Nancy Gassman, Deputy Director of Public Works and the Chief Resilience Officer for the city. In the conversation that we had with the various stakeholders related to the portion of the Osceola Creek, Creek north of State Road 84, it recognizes that the restoration project to the south of State Road 84 took a completely overgrown creek that was barely conveying any water to both a greater depth and a greater width of the conveyance. So, even without improvements to the north, there are, there's now substantially more capacity in the south portion of the Osceola Creek in order to take on stormwater. And those improvements were made as, as the city took over that property from the Florida Department of Transportation. They were the previous stewards of that drainage easements and the city petitioned to take it over so that we could substantially improve the capacity and conveyance for those portions of the Edgewood neighborhood that contribute to that location. And the areas of, of Edgewood that contribute are fairly small. There, there are just a couple of streets that end up connecting into Edgewood. The area to the north is a much bigger challenge. And the reason for that is that it's under private ownership. The area to the south was, was under FDOT jurisdiction before the city took it on.
Who owns that?
There's a storage facility and an apartment facility that currently own the area around Osceola Creek.
And that goes all the way up, I guess, up to 595 or does it go past that?
Up to 95. And at, at, once it hits 95, there are several large culverts that go under I-95 that are under the jurisdiction of FDOT. And so, when we got with the stakeholders, we were having this conversation about what, what's the ownership, what are the easements? And the city is currently doing a title search to try to determine exactly where, if at all, there are drainage easements over this particular parcel. But because of the, the substantial money that the city put into the south part, we are looking to those other stakeholders to support an effort. Once we start to understand what, what the ownership is and if there are drainage easements available, if there are opportunities to work with the other stakeholders to fund improvements to the north, similar to the restoration that occurred to the south.
I mean, I'm not going to hold you to this, obviously. I mean, give us a ballpark timeline or, I mean, how long some of these things take or?
Yeah, so I can't give you a timeline. Right now, I say over the next six months, we're working on the ownership and the drainage easement aspect of it, and then we'll get all the stakeholders back together. We are currently working with BCAD and with Hazen and Sawyer to look for other opportunities to improve the drainage right at the boundary between the Passive Park and the Osceola Creek. So we're looking for those opportunities now. But for improvements for Osceola, you have multiple jurisdictions, multiple governments that would have to come together, agree on a plan, and then agree on funding that plan.
Well, yes, my associate, would funding fall upon us or how would that?
So I think, I think one of the arguments the city could make is that because we have already invested in the South Port of the Osceola, south part of the Osceola, that, that is benefiting all of these other parties, that there would be a greater contribution from those other stakeholders to improve the north part.
From your lips to God's ears, when do we expect to have some sort of clarity on these drainage easements and, and the stakeholder, the ownership of these properties?
I, I would say in the next six months.
Next six months?
Yes.
Well, I run a title company. If I, if a client had to wait six months for a title search, they would cut my throat. Usually it's six days, but why is there so much so?
It's, it's not as simple as just requesting the, the title search.
Okay. Six months to determine the boundaries of an easement?
To determine if the easements actually exist, to determine the boundaries and to determine who is the owner of those easements.
Okay. Ultimately, the goal here is to find a way to push water out and away from the, the Osceola Creek. Because obviously, the creek only has a certain amount of capacity, even with dredging, even with hardening the, 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 the edges of the, of the creek. In the end, we need to push, push water out. The, the problem, of course, is the bodies of water onto which you wish to push water may themselves be full, especially if there's high tide, especially if there's been a lot of rain. It just comes back, right? We've seen that in many different situations. So, I don't know what the solution is, but back to my original question. So, um, I don't know what the solution is, but back to my original question, after all these improvements are made with the installation of the storm drain systems, with the installation of the pipes and the pumps, how much rain can, uh, these systems absorb in a 24-hour period going forward?
I think that you will, that the, the roads, the cul-de-sacs that are in the very southwest corner of Edgewood will continue to have some level of ponding in them. Water in households, I think we should be able to protect, I don't, Lucia, do you have the?
Well, we didn't hear any of that.
Could you repeat what she said?
Yeah, I did.
Okay, just repeat for the.
So, so, uh, they would accommodate on the order of about eight to 10 inches in a 20, in a, uh, 24-hour period.
And that's a combination of, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That was a combination of the new system, the swales and all the other natural, uh, uh, naturally, um, created opportunities, I guess, for absorbing water. So you combine all those things and we're talking about eight to 10 inches for every 24-hour period.
And I think it might, if we can, depending upon how we can, really, to me, the key is that, that downstream portion that's north of State Route 84, depending upon what we can do with that, you might be able to improve upon that slightly. We're also putting a, a small pump station in that very southwest corner of the Edgewood neighborhood that will pump into the newly constructed gravity piped main that will take water to the, uh, pump station in River Oaks. That will take a little bit of the burden off of the Osceola Creek, but it's a little bit of the burden. There's a lot of water, as has been mentioned, that are coming from the airport, the DOT and out of the Edgewood neighborhood. But it's really kind of one of those things where we're trying to piece together a system that where every little bit is going to be necessary to to make it work.
Can we change the gravity system of Osceola Creek and convert it to a, a pumped, um, creek so that it helps to accelerate the outflow of water away from the, uh, out of the creek itself?
I think that would be a, a large undertaking as that's all a jurisdictional, natural water body coming back, um, from the South Fork of the, the New River.
So what does that mean? I don't understand what that means. You say a, uh, jurisdictional thing, is that being we need the cooperation of the county? Is that what you're saying?
It, it's, it's highly unlikely that we would be able to get a permit to convert a creek and place a pump station at the mouth of that creek. Because it's a natural waterway, so Broward County would be.
Corps of Engineers.
Corps of Engineers, um, but from, it's a, it's a naturally occurring waterway as opposed to a created canal.
Okay, thank you.
It's a, it's a complicated system, probably the.
But in the meantime, it's a threatened neighborhood and everyone is wringing their hands, oh, we can't do anything, we can't do anything. But I know that the, the technology exists. I don't want politics between different government jurisdictions to, to be the roadblock that prevents us from doing the right thing. And, and I'm, and this is why nothing's gotten done, because we keep thinking that there are these roadblocks. Um, I appreciate all the work that, that's been done so far. It's a, it's, we've, this city has never, um, spent any money in these neighborhoods for as long as I can remember. Um, ever since their annexation, they just, we just assumed that swales and other naturally occurring, um, uh, topography were, were going to be sufficient. And many of the, for many years, it was sufficient. I mean, many of these neighborhoods never flooded. And now we're seeing more and frequent, more, more intense and more frequent storms. And especially since we're seeing really intense hurricanes, you know? You know, this is, this is, um, something we should plan for. And, and I'm just asking these questions to see whether there is even room for improvement. And what you're saying is, yeah, there is, but there are roadblocks to getting there.
There are. And, and, and as we have seen in the events of the last week, always uncertainties. You know, no one would have ever anticipated the April 2023 storm, um, nor the things that we've seen happen, um, with Hurricane Helene and its, and its remnants. So there's always that. Um, but, um, we continue to work on this. Uh, it was a heavy lift to get the portion of Osceola Creek done that we did get completed. That took a lot of work with DOT. Um, and we're continuing to work with BCAD, DOT, um, to try to get these other elements of it in the best condition we can to help protect those properties and all of the entities that use that, whether it's residents in Fort Lauderdale, uh, the, the airport, the, the DOT, et cetera.
You had said, one second, um, you had said that, uh, or Dr. Gassman had said that we, um, now have taken over the operation and maintenance of, of Osceola Creek, at least that southern portion.
Yeah, that middle portion.
But not the ownership of it.
We did, we, we own it now. And that was part of it was getting that from DOT because it was a mixed bag of ownership previously.
So, okay, so I'm thinking like a lawyer here now. Um, is it considered a trespass for them to dump all their water from 595 drainage systems? Is it considered a trespass for the county to dump all their airport water into our creek?
No, they're, they have, they're permitted to discharge those flows into that system.
Well, they owned it.
Uh, even when they didn't, I mean, the airport never owned it. And so, but they, but they have permits issued that allow them to discharge those amounts of water in.
Okay. Thank you. Dr. Dr. Sturman.
I guess, I think I'm getting ahead of myself, but I get, uh, Shady Bank, you're talking about, as you're going down that 995 corridor, Shady Banks is going to be the next section that you're going to talk, am I getting ahead of myself?
Next slide, do you have a?
Ooh, I anticipated well.
You're there. I think, and I think we've gone over at this point all of the, the status of the various neighborhood projects. Um, and again, HDR will give an update on Melrose Manners in here in a moment. So here you go. Uh, late last year, you all came forward with the Tranche Two neighborhoods, 17 of them shown and listed here. And, uh, Shady Banks is amongst those. And what we've done is we've kind of taken those 17 neighborhoods and we've consolidated them into 12 projects, 12 construction projects that we would anticipate going forward, which cover the geographic area of the, the 17 neighborhoods. And that consolidation process was based on a number of factors, but most notably the proximity and adjacency of neighborhoods to one another and the conditions and similarities relative to the conditions and the drainage infrastructure in those adjacent neighborhoods. We're also considering, uh, project phasing and how we roll these out over the years to come. And that's going to depend on a number of things, including, uh, program, funding and financing, the city's ability to simultaneously maintain multiple projects in the design and construction phase at any one time. And then again, the interdependencies between some of these neighborhoods. But what we're looking at is and anticipating are really three groups of four projects each, which would start into the design process, finish through permitting, bidding, construction. Um, the first of those starting probably at the beginning of 2025. Another, uh, segment of those in 27, another in 29, finishing all 12 by 2034, as we talked about with you, uh, last November.
So those dates are the start dates?
Those are the start dates. Those are when we would move out into the design for those various, uh, projects. And we've got our, we have the project team that we've been working with, Chin Moore, HDR, Craven Thompson, that would be there so that we have the capacity to tackle them in this fashion. Um, prioritization of the projects still ongoing. Going and factoring into that is the severity of the flooding in any of the given neighborhoods, um, what critical assets might exist in, in certain of the neighborhoods. Again, the interdependencies of their systems. And then spatial distribution, which is important to think about. Um, certain segments or areas of the city really can only take so much construction going on at, at a given time to where it becomes too much burden on the neighbors and on the traffic patterns taking place within those areas. We have been updating the citywide comprehensive stormwater model that was prepared at the outset of the Phase One of this project um, in a, an attempt to make sure that we've captured all of the advancements in resilience planning. First of all, we wanted to make sure that we got all of the newly constructed infrastructure that's been taking place in the city into the model, but also updating some of the conditions and parameters to make sure we're consistent with the Resilient Florida Grant Program. As has been talked about here, we know that rainfall, um, events are becoming more intense and more frequent. And when we talked to you last year, we talked about these extreme change factors, which are capturing the fact that we're seeing these heavy rainfalls more frequently and how we plan for those. And then we know with sea level rise, we'll also be dealing with a, a rising groundwater condition, which also can exacerbate some of the flooding. We've had half a dozen or more folks out, uh, collecting data within the 17 neighborhoods. Um, we've collected data both in wet and dry periods. And in the wet periods, we've used to guide us our knowledge of flood prone areas from the modeling, um, low elevations, as noted in your digital elevation model, and properties that we know have repetitive losses, um, with FEMA. And this is just to, to show kind of where those places are that we've visited. The blue dots being, uh, wet weather site visits and the, the green dots, uh, dry weather. We've utilized a tool called Survey 123 so that our folks in the field could input information about the conditions in the neighborhood. What's the nature of the infrastructure? Do they have outfalls or the accessible? What types of strategies might work in a given neighborhood? And all that's been loaded into a, a database, a dashboard that'll allow us to have kind of an at-a-glance snapshot or scorecard, if you will, relative to a particular neighborhood or segment of a neighborhood. So we have a good flavor of what's going on in that particular area. Through all that, we've identified and put together a toolbox that has, uh, has 10, adaptation strategies that we want to employ across the, the city. Um, everything from extending drainage systems, increasing conveyance capacities, putting in pump stations, raising sea walls, um, rehabilitating swales. The mayor mentioned that swales at one point in time really were the, the drainage for a lot of the area. And they still are functional in a lot of the areas of the city or can be. And this is just a matrix that after going through all of that indicates what types of strategies we feel will be appropriate within each of those 12 neighborhood projects. And so I'm going to walk through a series of slides here. Each of those 12 project areas, there's going to be a pair of slides. One that outlines the, uh, the nature of the vulnerabilities in that neighborhood. And the second in the pair will kind of give an overview relative to the strategies we intend to utilize to combat flooding. And so the first is a series of neighborhoods along Riverland Road. And, and this one is pretty, uh, does a pretty good job of exhibiting the majority of the vulnerabilities that we see. It's low lying, it has issues with grading. It has some areas that are unserved by drainage currently and other areas that are served by drainage systems that don't have adequate capacity. Um, and obviously it's in a, in an area that's tightly influenced. And so we're going to see a, a large number of the 10 strategies that we laid out will be utilized in an area such as this.
Go back to that last slide. The problem with that one here is, and, and the mayor and I know this, we overlap, this is our district. That has, um, some of that's, was Broward County unincorporated? We brought that in. And some of it is, is ours, some is county, some city, DOT. The, the, one of the issues is overlapping jurisdictions and different stormwater systems. That seems to be a challenge there. Is that something that you're addressing in, in some of these areas?
There, there are a couple of areas where that may happen. I don't think we have that issue here. I think everything that we have here, these, and, and just to give you a point of reference, each of these, uh, white triangles that you see represent an outfall from a drainage system into a water body. And you'll see it better in some of the subsequent slides. You can see it in some of the areas that are to the north of this actual project area. You see the shaded area and the colored lines and arrows. Those represent drainage networks that exist currently. So most of the systems that you see in this, um, in this, uh, project area are very small systems. It's a, it's a few catch basins that are connected and they have an outfall into a canal. Um, so we don't necessarily have that overlap of jurisdiction in this particular setting. Good? Okay. Okay, so, uh, Sailboat Bend Riverside Park, uh, very similar types of vulnerabilities. And as you would expect, has a pretty extended list of strategies that we will, um, utilize throughout different areas of, of this, uh, neighborhood project. Tarpon River and Croissant Park. Again, I'll, I'll point out, as I noted earlier, you've got the, uh, the, the, the colored lines and arrows and the shading behind them that represent the drainage areas that contribute. So when you see the, the darker areas that don't have any of the pastel shading, those are areas that don't have any built underground infrastructure associated with them. And so you can expect that those are areas where we, where we'll be wanting to extend, um, positive drainage. And again, a list of the variety of strategies that we'll utilize in that area. Flagler Village, um, obviously prolific drainage in that area. Um, but that system is highly dependent. If you look at the very bottom of the slide, you'll see an SS1 and SS2. Those are the city's two big pump stations that are right on the New River. And, um, and making sure that those are functional and have the appropriate capacity is paramount to the, to the level of service in this neighborhood. And so this is the one that you will see that requires us to do some upgrades to existing pump stations.
Those are the ones that we turn on. Those are the ones that you had shown me when we did our drive-through, SS1 and SS2, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Harbor Isles and the adjoining areas, again, out toward the beach, similar to the southeast Isles area in Tranche One. Most of the drainage systems in here are small. Um, an area, obviously, that's under tidal influence. We need to make sure that we have tidal valves here and improve the capacity of some of these small systems. Point Set of Heights and Lake Ridge, so the, the northern portion of this discharging to the, the Middle River via the green, um, colored system that you see there. Some of it discharging to the east through the, the pink colored system. Again, this is an area that we're going to be, um, utilizing a lot of different strategies in because it's a very, um, diverse in its, in its nature. South Middle River, very similar, same kind of thing. We don't have the system discharging all the way to the east. Everything here, or most of everything here is discharging into the Middle River. And you'll see on all of these going to the Middle River, back to the, the discussion relative to high tailwaters in any of our water bodies that we're discharging into. Wherever you see that, you're going to see us likely utilizing some form of pumping to add the energy to overcome that, uh, that head difference. Melrose Park, uh, one that's a little bit different. This one, uh, if you see the white dashed lines there, those are exfiltration trenches. There's a lot of swale, a lot of exfiltration trenches and ditches through in the Melrose Park area in need of maintenance, certainly. But this system, if you were to go off of the slide to the north, there are two box culverts that ultimately this neighborhood drains through to get to the C-12 canal, um, owned and operated by the South Florida Water Management District. We believe that there's also some value in looking at installing a pump station at the confluence of that box culvert system with the C-12 canal, which will make drainage out of Melrose Park, um, more effective.
The, um, red, um, indications are, I understand the white showing the, um, swales that you just assigned, but the red.
Yeah, so those, those little arrows like that, they're little segments of drainage systems. So when you get into Melrose Park, those are discharging into a kind of a, 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 an open ditch system that finds its way around and ultimately gets into this box culvert system toward the middle on the very north end of the neighborhood. But the, the, the red, the green, the, the aqua, all of those are just small drainage systems within the neighborhood.
So like the small, are you saying small ditches? Cause I've gone out and had.
They're small, they're little small pipe systems. So there's a few catch basins connected with small pipes that then connect into the ditches.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, Shady Banks, uh, was brought up earlier. Again, it's an area that has a lot of the vulnerabilities that we see across the city. Areas that don't have any drainage, um, some that are underserved because they don't have enough capacity. Obviously, another area that's tightly influenced. And so, um, you'll see the, a lot of the same strategies repeated in some of these neighborhoods. Um, Middle River Terrace, very similar. Middle River Terrace, very similar to the other ones that we've already looked at that are discharging into the Middle River, same kinds of adaptation strategies expected to be utilized. Imperial Point, a little different, further north, a little further east, a lot of this in higher ground, ground that would probably lend itself to green infrastructure and, and heavy utilization of swales. Most of the drainage issues in this one lie toward the western portion of the neighborhood. And then the last one is Riverland Village in Chula Vista. Riverland Village, you can see, has a ton of drainage constructed in it, in addition, or including a lot of exfiltration trench, again, the white dashed lines. A part of that system discharges straight down to the river, but a part of it discharges through Chula Vista, and that's a problem for Chula Vista, and we think we have some thoughts as to how we can unburden them with some of that drainage. And again, you know, we're kind of throwing everything in the kitchen sink at an area like this. Broward County will be permitting all of these projects, they've permitted all the projects in the first tranche of neighborhoods, we pulled a conceptual permit with the county to do those, was very helpful. We've already had a kickoff meeting with the county relative to Tranche 2, and we're going to do the same and have a separate Tranche 2 conceptual permit. That's important because it helps us lock in these planning-level concepts so that we can put them into place in design and construction later, even if that's several years down the road. And this is, again, kind of what the schedule looks like, was shared in a kind of a different graphical fashion before, but through February of next year, we'll be completing the planning effort and all of the modeling. At the beginning of the year, we'll start to move out with that first group of four projects, and then subsequently moving out with the second group in '27, the third in '29, able to complete all 17 neighborhoods via these 12 projects by 2034, as we had shared with you last November. We're also, through the course of the program, building a cost database. We're taking all of the bid information that comes in on these jobs, we have four of them in the books to speak now, and it's going to be helpful to us, help us with our cost estimating going forward, help us to evaluate some of the trending of costs. And as you can tell from these curves, since the beginning of the program, a little over three years ago, we have seen costs go up at a, at a very accelerated pace. So this cost escalation is something we're looking closely at. We are concerned that the $200 or so million that we've talked about to date about Tranche 1 won't be sufficient to get us all the way through those eight projects. We'll continue to monitor this and update as we get more data into the, the cost database. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was public outreach. We had a very robust program on the first wave of neighborhoods, we'll do the same here with Tranche 2, we'll meet with them through the planning, design, and construction processes. The first of those meetings are already being scheduled, and we're starting to have some of those meetings right here in October. And then we're doing something a little bit different here that will not only hit the Tranche 2 neighborhoods, but it will be broader, citywide, and that is talking about private property resilience. How can we help provide resources to our, our private homeowners and business owners that will help them at the private property level do what they can do to work together with what government is doing to make their properties more resilient, to make sure that they're in a better position to deal with the aftermath of flooding if they, if they do have some. And so we're, we're pretty excited about the, and hopeful about what that could mean for the city. And then this is the timeline, I think we've shared this before, the thing, I felt kind of funny with autumn being up there, it's, I guess it's officially autumn, but it was 90 degrees when I was walking here. So anyway, we'll, we plan to come back to see you sometime toward the end of the year, beginning of next, with the finalized conceptual plans, and then we'll be ready to move out in 2025 with the, the actual designs for these neighborhoods. And when the city has completed Tranche 1 and Tranche 2, I think you all will have done a, a great job of tackling the 60-plus percent most flood-prone areas within the city of Fort Lauderdale. And glad for any other questions you've got.
So, if I may, Mayor?
Yep.
So a couple of things, so I, I understand the largest area that has been impacted is not in my district, I certainly understand that. Point Setta Heights, though, has certainly experienced a great deal of flooding. 15th Avenue has been impacted substantially, there's had a lot of ponding up in that area. So I'd like to talk a little bit more about that, please. And also, I don't see Bayview mentioned at all in here. So since we've done the projects on Bayview, Bayview has become impassable on many, many instances when we've had rainstorms. So I'm not sure about this survey, but to completely leave Bayview out of this discussion, I think is irresponsible. We need to address what's been going on up there. You know, we did the redundant sewer line there, and ever since we've done that, we've had ongoing problems with the roadway continuing to collapse in many areas. I, you know, we've got ongoing divots that pop up and get filled in, and pop up and get filled in, we've got ponding all over that road, you know, it's right along the intercoastal there, we need to do something about that. That neighborhood is being ongoingly impacted every time we have a rainstorm. So I, I'm distressed not to see more of what's going on in my district as part of our plan, so I need you to address that, please.
We will do that. And one of the things that I think we noticed when we did have the force main break there is that along that area, one of the, one of the breaks was at a, was at a conflict structure where you had a, a stormwater and a sewer main that were basically running through a conflict structure. And I think it would be, I know there's an asset management program going on with the city, too, I think it would be good to go back and look at where those other occurrences of that are happening and make sure that we're dealing with that. But we'll, we will take a harder look at Bayview in particular and other areas in your district.
We're going to have to, because I've got water going up into people's houses when it rains. And Jim, would you like to talk about what's going on in Point Setta Heights? Would you care to? I, I'd like, so Jim's with our neighborhood association, I'd like him to specifically weigh in.
Well, I'll just say that as of this morning, we've arranged to have the Hazen Sawyer people, and they'll be speaking at our Neighborhood Civic Association in October, a couple of weeks. But there has been some significant flooding, Dr. Gassman's spoken a few times already at the Civic Association meetings explaining what's been going on and helping us deal with it. I did notice on your slide presentation that you didn't talk about tidal valves, and all along the south fork of the Middle River, several of those systems drain into the Middle River, but yet the tidal valves don't work, or they need to be replaced or something, so I think that's something that needs to be looked at, but I don't, John, what?
Well, we've got that, and then, you know, again, and, and thank you, Jim, I appreciate that, because, you know, the neighbors there are calling me every time it rains.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, we're getting this, I mean, you're getting the calls, I'm getting the calls, we know this, we, again, we know that 15th Avenue has had major problems, 18th, just, you're seeing it all over the place up there. And, you know, I, I respect, again, that there are other neighborhoods that have had, you know, somewhat more catastrophic impacts than we have, and, and I, I don't mean to, I don't mean to minimize that, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we're focusing on these other areas. You know, we've got, we've got problems in Coral Shores, we've got problems in Coral Ridge and Coral Ridge Country Club, and we've got problems in Point Setta Heights. So I don't want you guys walking away thinking everything is fine in District 1, because it's not.
And I think one of the, one of the ways in which we were really well-informed in the first round of neighborhoods was at these neighborhood meetings, and the, the atmosphere was such that the, the neighbors themselves could come up and share with us exactly where they know there are problems, you know, they know it's on their corner, on their street. A lot of them brought photographs, we've had even people brought videos of, of flooding in their neighborhoods. So it was really a, that first meeting, the one that we're starting to have in October with the neighbors, is one that's really mainly for us, because it's a great fact-finding period to, to get the, the insight on exactly what's going on.
Well, that's, but that's why I'm a little perplexed that Bayview is not on there, because I've sent photographs and videos of the flooding on Bayview, and I, and I don't see it there. So we need to go back and revisit that.
Can I, hold on a second?
And I want to make sure that the mayor can get to his house in Point Setta Heights.
Yeah, well, you see, we don't really have that much of a problem in certain sections of Point Setta Heights. I know that, that the most complaints I've ever heard are from the northern end where Point Setta Drive is, and I noticed a lot of pipes are being put in the ground there. What's, Alan, what's going on there?
Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure exactly which project that-
Okay, I don't know either.
There is one on 15th, which is a wastewater project, Wilton Manners is doing to connect it, to put in a new connection into our system for wastewater.
Okay, so that makes sense, okay, because it's blocking all of 15th Avenue, and, and I'd have thought, I thought they were connecting into our system, but I wasn't sure, and I knew that was part of, part of the expectations that we had of, of Wilton Manners to upgrade their system. But the most complaints I've ever heard in Point Setta Heights has been in the northern part of the, excuse me, the northern part of the neighborhood where it does flood. I happen to have a storm drain in front of my house, but maintenance is a big issue. So, but that's not infrastructure, that's just maintenance, so that's a whole other discussion. But, but, but Bayview has been a, a real big problem, and it made, we made it look real pretty, but when it rains, we kind of lose all of that, so.
And Mayor, that's why we, we came forward with the 17 neighborhoods, which is what we presented in October, we did the analysis of those, because we have to prioritize when we come to you at the end of this year with the, the projects, we will need the commission to decide which ones we're doing first, because we can't do everything at once.
I understand.
So we will need some assistance with prioritization as we're trying to move forward with these over the next 10 years.
I totally understand.
The, the mayor's comments reminded me of something that I should have made a point of in the presentation, and so because you see the boundary of the neighborhoods and the projects comprised of the neighborhoods, does not necessarily mean that all areas within that neighborhood have a similar issue with drainage. Some of the areas within these neighborhoods don't have any issues with drainage, some have some moderate issues and others have some pretty serious issues. So as you look at those, just keep that in mind, that it isn't one-size-fits-all when it comes to the area encompassed in those neighborhoods.
Maybe you can put a pipe in my carport, which always seems to collect a lot of water when it rains.
So some of the system boundaries are not necessarily the political boundaries on a map.
Right, I mean, those are the, what you saw there are the neighborhood boundaries, and it doesn't necessarily mean that, that everywhere within that neighborhood has an issue.
I'm, I have a question, the floor? Okay. I'm so glad you brought that up, tidal valves. Do you want to, could you just talk about that? That's just something that comes up where they have it, how they work, and, I mean, I'm constantly bombarded with, with neighbors, oh, the tidal valve, it's not working, it's a failure, I mean, they're on and on what it's supposed to do. Explain to the community where they are, what they do, and how we're doing with that.
Commissioner, I'll, I'll get you a map, but there's over 200 tidal valves that are installed. Over the last, started in about 2012, so over the last 12 years, we've installed 200 tidal valves, with many more being added in the current Tranche 1 neighborhoods, and obviously, a tool that we hope to use in Tranche 2. Title valves are only installed in the very last catch basin before the outfall, because that's where the ocean wants to make its way into our stormwater system. So there's tidal valves in, in lots of places, we've been installing them as we discover challenges in given neighborhoods where we are seeing these high tides starting to impact the neighborhoods through the stormwater system specifically.
Just for clarification, and I guess maybe a lot of the people in the, the audience might not understand this, I guess when tides go up and down, we want to get water, water's going to flow like automobiles, you have to have a place for them to go to. And I guess when the, depending on the tide, you're going to have water flowing into a body of water, and I guess the tidal valve is when the tide goes up, so it doesn't go in the reverse direction, is that the whole key to that?
Right, so the whole, the whole point of a tidal valve is to prevent saltwater from using our stormwater system to flood our roadways.
And the, and the wrong direction.
Coming-
When the tide goes up, it goes in the wrong direction.
The wrong direction that, that causes flooding, where the stormwater system is intended to drain water off of the roadways and into a nearby water body.
So-
But it, it should be noted that tidal valves shut when the water is high, and that if we have concurrent rain or any other water source that comes onto the roadway, that fresh water will pond on the road until the tidal valve is able to open at lower tide.
Right, so people have to understand that a tidal valve, when the tides are up, it's not, I mean, it's not like, oh, the king tides are here, and all of a sudden, the tidal valve is going to solve that problem. What it does is it stops reverse flow when the tides are high, coming back and making the problem worse.
It prevents saltwater flooding on the roadways.
Okay. And how is, how's that project working? I mean, it's, people, I mean, everybody likes to point fingers everywhere, how is, how is the tidal valve project successful?
I, I think it's very easy, when you drive this neighborhood, and I've talked to a number of people as we've gone through tours during the king tide season, stating that this road used to flood all the time, and even during extreme high tides, we don't see flooding in certain locations. And so the tidal valves have been very effective in reducing the frequency, duration, and intensity of flooding in many of the neighborhoods throughout the city.
Okay, but again, just to reiterate, with, with king tides, the valves are not going to get rid of the, people think, oh, you have a king, a tidal valve, when the king tide-
It's not a pump, it's, it's a passive device.
Correct, okay, thank you.
And I will say, you know, you will see us using them in combination sometimes with pumps, where the flooding that might happen behind a sea wall or when the tidal valve is closed, if that flooding would become severe, then we want to make sure that we have another means to get rid of that rainwater, so, but you can't put that every place, that's got to be where, where the conditions would be most severe.
Okay, any further questions? There being none, Ted, you wanted to speak.
I, I have a question before Ted comes.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
This is, I guess, more of a statement than a, a question.
Okay.
As we're preparing this and going through, you, Mayor, mentioned about the maintenance of our-
Existing systems.
The systems, existing water drains. Are we, with our maintenance scale, we need to make sure that we are consistently maintaining these drains, so we would have no interruption with the waters flowing out. I asked before about maintenance schedules, to know when they were being done and conducted, and I would love to have that, still haven't received them in the way that I requested. Right now, adding to the conversation with the construction that's going on, the project in Dorsey Riverbend, the base, those water drains are clogged with all kind of things, and they need to be maintained, so we don't have this overflow of water. I shared with Mayor last week, the rain that came down one Thursday, you know, it did not stand, but the water was almost knee-deep on Six Trunk. People were driving through, and when you go through, you can see that the drains need to be maintained, and even in the areas where they're doing construction, is there any requirement that weekly, that, that debris that's gathering, that is being removed?
Nancy Gassman, again, the Stormwater Operations Team visually inspects every catch basin in the city twice a year.
Twice a year?
Twice a year. And so as part of that inspection, they submit work orders for drains that need to be cleaned and for debris to be removed as appropriate. In areas where there is construction taking place, it's, the, there's a requirement of the construction that filter cloth be placed underneath the top of the grate, and that does slow down the ability of water to move as quickly into those drains. I also was caught in that rainstorm, it was a very intense rainstorm over a very short period of time, however, within just a few hours, that water went down. Our system is designed to manage about three inches of rain that comes down over a 12-hour period. If we get three hours in a single, three inches of rainfall in a single hour, areas will flood all over the place, but that water will drain over the period of the next several hours. And we saw that during the June rainfall event in the downtown area, within three hours, the areas that were flooded were dry. And so some of it is setting the expectations of the public for what the system is designed to do. We do not have a system that we keep the roads dry. We have a system that within a certain specified rainfall event, that we are able to get those roads so that they are in a passable condition within a certain number of hours. And so the expectation that after a very intense rain, that the road will be dry, is not one that we will ever be able to meet.
Okay, but within that same statement that you're making, back to the point, like we were talking about those basins that are not being maintenance when they're doing construction, I question, is that a requirement of those who are doing the restructuring, the construction in the area, to make sure weekly that it, on Friday?
Yeah, on the- Yeah, the construction companies are required to make sure that those drains remain as functional as possible per the construction. But keep in mind that in many, many times, they're taking one pipe out and replacing with a larger pipe. And when they've taken that pipe out, there is no drainage available for some period of time as they're replacing that drain. So under while things are under construction, the system is not working as it previously designed or as or the future as it's designed.
So at that time, it's not working?
It's not working as designed. I'm not saying it's not working because drainage is still happening. And there's still plenty of drainage features that are available even if we're removing a pipe, for example, the soil system. But you have to understand that when it's under construction, it's a it's a work in progress.
Okay, because what I'm requesting, and we could talk about this at a separate opportunity, but their maintenance, the maintenance needs to happen.
The maintenance is happening.
Well, I haven't. I asked beginning when I started in this seat for that report. I don't get that report. So I'm not validating that. No.
I'm not sure what report you're requesting, ma'am.
Requesting that I requested that I get a maintenance report of my district when those drains are cleaned. And that was it started. My original request was for Melrose Park. And then I came back and I said, I need it for my district and I have not received that. Okay, so I'm asking again to receive that.
So again, I want you to understand that we the catch basin in front of the mayor's house, that's not scheduled for maintenance every April third. We we maintain those basins based on our inspections and we're inspecting every basin twice a year, which is a much higher level of service than most stormwater operations groups provide to their own systems. So we have a very proactive program relative to maintenance, but there's not a set maintenance schedule for each neighborhood in a given month or at a given time.
Okay, but again, I want to validate that it's being received, that it's being done because I have a basin in front of my house. I haven't seen it cleaned. I go out and I do because one time there was an opportunity where the city was inviting neighbors to volunteer to keep their basins clean. I do that. I can see what's in my basin. No one's come out to suck it out, clean it out. And I've, you know, like I said, that's before, two years sitting in the seat. So when is the two year mark? So my question is, can I get that report so we can know it's being done? That's all I'm asking for. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. and Sarah.
Hello, my name is Ted and Sarah. I'm going to do two things I've never done up here before. I'm going to wear glasses and I have a lot of paperwork.
Campaigning got to you?
Yeah. Commissioner, I've been asking for those same reports for years now. We have not received any. I have some drains in my neighborhood that look like terrariums because there's plants growing up through the great system. And maintenance is the key. If Osceola Creek was maintained all along, then that would have eased a lot of the flooding. But maintenance seems to be a word that we just put off here in in Fort Lauderdale. But let me tell you, these, what you said was the Edgewood and River Oaks, the pipes are substantially complete. Well, but the pumps aren't ready. Here's when you mentioned June, I have pictures of our neighborhood in April for the big flood and also the same house in June after the flood, and it looks exactly the same. Our question is, why did it take so long? The drains have been in, but the pumps just take forever and ever. Why wasn't there a system where we didn't have to have the drains in to give us a false sense of security? And then suddenly, oh, well, they're not really working because the pump isn't isn't ready. And we're still saying, he said, December thirteenth. If I was a betting man, which I am, I would be all in on the over on December thirteenth. I mean, everything. That's that's the whole key is those pumps. If the pumps aren't done, we don't have anything. And and we flood now all the time now.
Now, let me ask you something.
Yes.
Did the floodwater last as long the second time as the first? Because I've been told, I asked the same question. You know, once the system is in, can't we use, can't we use portable or temporary pumps until we get the the permanent pumps? And and they and I've been told that temporary pumps are available and have been used. So I'm wondering, was the floodwater still standing for the same amount of time the second time as as was the first?
Yes, because you got to put in a request for these temporary pumps and then that takes days before they react. It's it's just pointless. They should be in place. I can tell you exactly where it's going to flood in Edgewood and River Oaks. You know, every single time we need, we should have a staging area somewhere close by. So boom, we can get them right there instead of waiting and waiting. And then by the time they're ready to put them in, it's already too late. It's it's been been gone. Now let's talk about the Osceola Creek. Let me tell you, the River Oaks Civic Association bought me a set of waders like you're fishing in the water. I walked the entire creek. This thing where it says substantially complete dredging is false. It is not true. And they did a small portion in Edgewood. They didn't do anything when it comes under State Road eighty four.
Well, they said we don't. We don't have the abilities. It's all privately owned.
Ha. Well, here's this that would take you six months in order to get that I was told. Here's the deed. It's not privately owned. It's owned by the county. So this whole thing that was told about, we were always told it's privately owned. We can't do anything about it. It's going to take months and months. Presto Angel right here. I have all the paperwork that you need.
In front of you, but we don't know what it represents. So if you don't mind leaving a copy of it with us, so at least we have that. Sure. I mean, just presenting a deed doesn't necessarily mean it covers the area that we're talking about.
No problem. Yeah. But like you said, with this maintenance and and everybody keeps talking about swales, swales. Let me tell you, these little swales in front of the houses don't do anything. I mean, they that's it's a nice thought and oh, it's, oh, don't worry, we have swales. Instead of a swell, what we need is a moat in front of these houses when the water comes in. Because the swales, they're nice, but they really don't do the job that's needed when we get this much rain coming in.
Your remarks. You're over three minutes. Please conclude your remarks.
Okay, for one thing, maintenance, maintenance is a key. And and we just and I don't know why it took so long. It's taking so long to get the pumps working. Why wasn't this all done? One project, boom, at a time, working the pumps back by our River Oaks Preserve while they're putting in the drain pipes and then everything comes together at the same time. And boom, instead of waiting a year until after the
I don't think these pumps are sitting on a shelf.
Well, they sure weren't worked on. I mean, they didn't start it until well after.
Information is that it takes time to construct these pumps and they.
But that's why you that's called planning.
Yeah, I understand that. Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner.
Alan or just, I mean, how long it comment on how long it takes for the pumps to be made. The whole maybe they have to be made, custom made, what the timeline is and and why just comment on that if you can.
Commissioner, when we awarded the contract, there's a lot of long lead times. In this case, the pumps have to be manufactured specifically for the station. The electrical switch gears, the generators, all are very long lead times and they have timelines to go with it. They place those items on order as soon as the contract was awarded so they could move forward. But that the pump stations typically take much longer than the collection systems or the pipes in the ground.
Is that typical of a project like this?
Yeah, that's typical of any pump station that we're building. We have the same thing on the wastewater side where it takes longer. And
I would say, I mean, exactly. I mean, the idea was really to try to get both of these projects to the finish line as close as possible as as we can. It's kind of, you know, six in one half dozen of the other. If you finish the pipes before the pump station, you've got an issue. If you finish the pump station and you can't finish the pipes, you have a pump station and no way to get water to them. So the intent was really to try to get them finished near the same time. Certain delays, obviously, long lead times and other things have created a gap much longer than what we wish they would have been. The the point would have been to have completed them somewhat closer together.
They were both ordered at the same time.
It was ordered as soon as the contract was awarded.
Okay, so they're ordered at that. Okay.
Any other questions?
I'll leave you a copy of the deeds.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission? All right. Thank you so much. Keep up your work. We really appreciate all that you've been doing. And, you know, it's hard, you know, we all understand and appreciate the frustration of many of our neighbors. It's hard to make up for the neglect of twenty and thirty years and try to do it overnight. Your timeline of ten years covers all the neighborhoods, not just the one or two. And hopefully we can get as many done as possible. Thank you, Colonel Dodd. Thank you, Dr. Gassman. We appreciate all the work that you do and everyone on your staff. So.
And I think on all of us are on the same up here is that, you know, for years, you know, don't pay a lot of attention to infrastructure. You turn on your faucet, you flush your toilet, it works. And somebody says, why am I going to increase my taxes for something that's working every? Now that we realize it's broken, I think it's it's become a priority for every one of us at this.
Well, everyone's expectations have been raised because they see we're working on it. But the fears it multiply when we have these storms.
Correct.
You know, and that's the problem. If we don't have that luxury of not knowing when the next storm is going to happen. So thank God, these hurricanes are bypassing us and and hopefully we'll continue to have that break in between so that we can get the work done.
And I think us and the community all realize that, I mean, flooding has become probably maybe the number one priority for the community as well as the commission at this particular point. Thank you very much.
All right. Chris, did you want to speak? Now, this is going to this is going to morph into business, too. Are we having a special presentation on Melrose Manor Stormwater Project or is this incorporating that? I know it's the next presentation, but is there more detail? Is that what you want to give today? Okay, okay. Mr. Nelson.
All right. Hello, Chris Nelson, and I think the standards have been raised because of the amazing way that Governor DeSantis and the state handle hurricanes when they come. So let's get up to the Florida standard. I'm holding up a newspaper article from nineteen forty seven. Davy in Fort Lauderdale handed staggering blow by big storm. Twelve to fifteen inches of rain. Rain down here is nothing new. It's just we got a lot of buildings down here now. So so all this, all this water is building up. But I'm glad to see some of these discussions that are happening. This was great. This is all great hearing these guys talk. The the valve, that's something of a lot of interest. But what's missing is a report on the flood of April twenty twenty three, like an actual independent report and coming back with what recommendations and what should be done. But I tried ChatGPT to see what you should do for flooding in a subtropical climate. Levees and dikes, construct levees or dikes around rivers, lakes, and coastal areas. Seawalls and tide gates. Urban planning, zoning regulation, restrict development in flood prone areas, especially near rivers, coastlines, low flying zones. Flood zone and elevation, ensure new buildings or construction at a higher level or incorporate floodproofing designs such as elevated foundations. Wetland restoration, natural buffers, preserve, restore wetlands, mangroves, and other natural water absorbing ecosystems that can act as natural buffers to absorb excess water. River and waterway restoration, restore rivers and natural waterway pathways to allow excess water to flow away from the city. They were talking about away from the city.
So are you reading an article or do you have comments?
This is ChatGPT. This is this is what this is what what the 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 algorithm gods say is the is the answer to this. And I I think this is interesting because we're on the right path on some of these things. But there's also some other things that that we can do. Upgrade the sewer systems is on here. You're doing that. The pump stations, use pump stations in low lying areas to remove excess water. You're doing that. We could use more than three trucks. Preparation, though.
By the way, we have a lot more than three trucks, just so that you know.
We do? Okay, great. Great.
You keep I keep hearing you saying that, but we have all we have many, many more.
How many do we have?
And and we have those on call in case we need them. So I remember there were over twenty four, was it, something like that, when we had the last storm.
Well, you know what Ted was saying about preparation in the staging area? That that would be good. The thing is, is like, though with a hurricane, you have war fair warning of it. With a lot of these floods, I mean, they just come on you like right away. So getting everything out there when you need it to, that's the key. I'm just wondering, is there any other city in the world in a subtropical climate that has handled this problem well and can tell us exactly how to how to deal with it?
Is this question and answer period?
Do you think it is? That's what I would do. I mean, when I need a problem, I find somebody that's done it successfully.
We attend all these conferences and trust me, all these conferences that we attend, everyone is asking one another. You know, there's only so much capacity that these systems can can sustain, as you know. So, you know, if we we look at these storms up north, you see in North Carolina, they had ten inches of rain and whole cities, all whole villages are wiped out. I mean, fortunately, we don't have that situation. If we have ten inches of rain, we get flooded, but the city isn't wiped out. I see houses floating down rivers. I mean, that is a tragedy and that's just ten inches of rain. Okay? So we had twenty six inches in five hours. So, you know, to some extent, our absorption capacity, you know, was such that we were able to at least maintain the dignity of some of these neighbors. Some of the neighbors were wiped out completely. You know, they had to move, especially certain elderly people. Not everyone had insurance. Hopefully, we learn from each incident, but hopefully those incidents occur fewer and fewer times and we're doing our best to try to catch up. So.
Well, the king tides were up at that time, like they are today. When we had the flood just the last six, six or five, six months ago, the king tides were out. So like it was, it went from being like a lake to nothing, almost in.
It doesn't help.
Yeah. So the king tides are up now. So.
Let's pray for no rain. All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Dean. Thank you, Commissioner. Have a good day.
Okay, let's move on. Melrose Manors Neighborhood Storm Waters Project Update. Who's going to be giving that?
Same cast of characters?
For the presentation, this is specifically on the improvements Melrose Manors. It's been in design for the past year. We're now at the point where we're moving into the next phase for deliberate design. We had a lot of work that has occurred. Daniel Suarez is the president for HCR and he'll be giving the presentation.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to present an update on the Melrose Manors and Riverland Civic Association Stormwater Improvements Project. So the project areas encompass Melrose Manors and Riverland Civic Association, as you can see on the slide here, and it's six hundred and forty acres. That's roughly one square mile and it's bounded by Southwest Thirty First Avenue, Broward Boulevard, Davy Boulevard, and Interstate ninety five. And if you want to take a look at the the elevations, it's color coded here. The the green are the lower lying areas and the the yellow and red are higher elevations. Generally, the area is lower lying, is not as lower lying, is low lying as some of the other neighborhoods, but it does experience a lot of flooding, chronic flooding, primarily because there's no infrastructure in the neighborhood right now, except for swales. So there's no way for waters to to get out of the neighborhood, which is problematic on on a smaller storm, but certainly for a much more serious storm, it causes major problems. So the status of the design, we've we've completed the preliminary design. We've made significant progress over the last few months and some of the things that we've worked on and completed are environmental studies. We've gone through initial data collection, collection phase, which includes collecting survey information. Also subsurface investigation, which is geotechnical. They're getting samples of soil several feet under the ground to to understand the characteristics of the soil. We've had several conversations with permitting agencies, particularly Broward County and their environmental group. And we've developed a conceptual stormwater model specifically for for this neighborhood. We've we've participated in two different public meetings with the homeowner associations in the area. And we're at the point where we've recommended a concept, conceptual design. So the the conceptual design or the proposed improvements, you can see here on the slide. They they consist of putting storm drains on pretty much every side street within the city's right of way. As I mentioned before, it's lacking that infrastructure now. So this is the only way to capture that stormwater and get it off the streets. That stormwater will be collected and conveyed to, we're proposing two different pump stations. One will be located at Westwood Heights Park, which is on the corner of Southwest Tenth Street, I'm sorry, Southwest Eighth Street and Southwest Twenty Eighth Avenue. That's the pump station indicated with a red circle on the left. And then there's another pump station that we've proposed to be in the southeast corner of Riverland Park. So the water will be conveyed from all different places of the neighborhood, be routed to these pump stations, at which time it will be pumped via a pipe to the North Fork of the New River, crossing Broward Boulevard. So part of the project area, you'll notice, is north of Broward Boulevard through the Shipmunk Property, which is a warehouse company. There'll be outfall, and there will also be a tidal valve there as well.
Is this 441? What is that yellow thing? On page four?
On page four.
Back.
Go back.
Back. Back, page four. What is that? Is that is that?
That's I-95.
That's I-95?
That's I-95, yeah, yeah.
I have a question. How many of the storm drains are being placed? I see you said on, do you have a number of how many is actually being placed in the community?
I don't know, it's it's in the hundreds. I can get back to you with a specific number if you'd like.
Thank you.
So that whole neighborhood, wow.
Yeah, but there's there's nothing.
It's major. This was part of the annexed area from years ago. I remember this.
That's correct.
All right, wasn't wasn't Melrose?
No, this is Manor's, Manor's is.
Manor's was part of it, wasn't annexed?
No, it's always part of the city.
Oh, so it's Melrose Park, okay.
So we've completed the preliminary design. We've been working very hard on on the final design. And what that entails is refining our design and getting the the plans ready for for bid for a contractor. Part of that includes picking up additional survey information just to avoid conflicts with utilities. Additional places as well where we want to get more geotechnical information. And our geotechnical engineer should be out there in the very near future to to start that process. We plan to submit permit application in Broward County with their environmental group before the end of the year. That's one of the things that we look to to fast track this project, trying to cut some time off the schedule. Originally, we were planning to submit, this is part of the city's overall conceptual permit. But for various reasons, including getting this project moving more quickly, we wanted to forego that step. And so we talked to the county regulators, and we're going straight to a construction permit application. So again, we're we're planning to submit that application before the end of the year. Part of our final design effort is to continue to refine the stormwater model. That's going to be part of that permit application submittal. And of course, we'll we'll participate in public meetings as they're scheduled and as they're necessary to inform the residents of the neighborhoods. One of the things that the city is working through is getting an easement with the Shipmunk property owners. And I think there's there's significant progress being made there. I don't believe that they've acquired the easement yet, but I believe the city is getting close. And and finally, once we have all this, we're working towards construction plans and specifications that the city could put up to bid for a contractor. Okay, so this graphic here is a graphic of the existing flooding for a 10 year, 24 hour storm. In other words, a storm that lasts a day and occurs once every 10 years. It's about 10 inches, a little less than 10 inches of rain. So as you can see, there's a lot of dark blue, the darker the blue, the the more the flooding. And in some areas, you're seeing more than one foot. But most of this neighborhood under this storm event, it's probably about half a foot is what their model is suggesting. And this kind of matches up with what we've seen out in the field and some of the historical information that we've reviewed. So here's the graphic for the same storm, 10 year, 24 hour storm. And with our proposed project, so what what's the neighborhood going to look like? Well, there's still going to be water on the street, but there's going to be a a big reduction of water. Hopefully, the streets will be passable in in this scenario. And it's showing a reduction of flood of water up to six inches. So it's it's definitely an improvement. And I'm going to talk about the biggest improvement, I'm leading up to it, so. This is a more severe storm, the 100 year, 72 hour storm. And this equates to about 19 inches of rain, which it's 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 very hard to do anything with this because again, these types of storms come up very suddenly. In a 72 hour period. So there's flooding in more than one foot in in many of these areas here, which shouldn't be a surprise. With with the proposed project, we're going to see some significant improvement. We're going to see six inches of improvement and up to a foot in some areas of improvement in the neighborhood with this with this approach. But the biggest improvement, I think this project's going to offer is improvement in the duration or the amount of time the floodwaters are in the street. If we look, this this graph is representative of an intersection on Southwest 9th Street and Southwest 28th Avenue. But what it's showing is that where without the project, there would be a few feet of water on the street for for days, if not weeks. Implementing this project would reduce that to less than eight hours. You know, there'll be a little bit less water and it'll be on the street a lot less time. So again, from from days or weeks down to hours and getting the the neighborhood strained. So estimated timeline for completion, we we're looking to accelerate accelerate this as much as I can, as much as we can at this point. One of the ways we're doing that, as I mentioned, is we're we're foregoing the conceptual permit application. We're going straight to the construction permit. But we're looking to to finish the bulk of the design at some point next year, and then the city can put this out to bid in the spring of 2026, hopefully sooner than that. So we're we're looking for ways to to beat this, as I said. And then construction, as of now, is scheduled for for mid 2026.
And and when? And and when?
I'm sorry.
And when?
And and when? Oh, well, it depends on the contractor, but hopefully two years.
So 2028?
2028.
I mean, you you identify a lot of streets with a lot of piping and a lot of disruption. So people are going to want to know if it begins in two years from now, it's going to end four years from now. So, okay.
Yes, it's one of the things that I I didn't mention, but I'll go back to the graphic. Is this design concept with two pump stations? There's there's different ways to to bid this. There's flexibility in phasing and how this can be built right with either the pump stations first, if there's a long lead item associated with that, or you can do one side of the neighborhood before the other. So this this approach provides the flexibility of phasing as well, but.
When we had our pre agenda meeting on, I don't know, yesterday, that was yesterday. I did express my concern with the timeline, understanding the design, the the going through, getting a construction company on board to do this. And understanding you have shaved off some time as well. But I'm asking, I also spoke with city manager to let us look at how we can trim additional time off of this because this is a long period of time. And, you know, just thinking about what was said previously, every storm, every rain, neighbors are, you know, experiencing trauma. Is this going to happen again? And even in that vein, we're losing neighbors because they're moving out of the area. So whatever we can do to trim off the time, three, four, six, seven months, a year would be a a idea opportunity. So I'm asking that you continue on the path that you're on with knowing that urgency that's needed for this. And also, I I always have this conversation, Mayor, you brought out about was Melrose Manor's annexed? The answer is no, it was always a child of the city. So how did we get here that a child of the city that never had infrastructure? So we need to put some, you know, attention to this, you know, even though we have neighborhoods that were annexed. But how do you allow your child that's under your umbrella to never have infrastructure? So we need to correct that. Thank you.
Pam, can I ask you a question? Hey, Mr. Mayor, if I just, so Melrose Manor has always been under the city, correct? How about Melrose Park? Has that been annexed?
That was annexed.
That was annexed, so, okay. That's what I thought, okay. But Riverland, I recall Riverland being annexed too. When I was at first a commissioner in the early 2000s, I thought we annexed them. It doesn't matter.
Part of Riverland or the south on the south of Davie?
Part of it was, but it doesn't really matter. We're we're moving forward on this and, you know, a lot of these neighborhoods were built on the cheap. And, you know, a lot of drainage systems just were never incorporated in some of our single family home areas. So at least we're getting started, you know, we're finally, we're finally taking on the responsibility that many should have thought we should have taken on many decades ago. But we're doing it now, and I applaud our commission for moving forward on this. And I, do you have any other questions of the of our folks here today? No one signed up to speak? You're welcome. All right, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to business three, more talk about water, was it Water Day?
Today's Dr.
King Tides.
Dr. Gassman's day today, yeah.
Dr. Gassman, so the question was asked about what what is a tidal valve? So what I'm holding in my hand is a six inch tidal valve, recognizing that most of our outfalls are 15 inch or greater.
Did you have that in your backpack? What did you find?
Yeah, I carry one around my back pockets, sir.
This is this like short tank, can we look, can we, can we look at that?
Yeah, so I'm I'm going to just walk the panel here and give you a quick demonstration. But basically, the way that it's installed inside each catch basin from this side, I'm trying to show the camera from this side. What you see is that if I put my hand in it, it can't go anywhere. Doesn't go anywhere. But if there's rainfall, so this is the side that the ocean would come in. But if there's rainfall and the ocean's not blocking, these pop open. So fairly fairly simple device, passive device. And I'll hand it off to Commissioner Sturman to share.
I feel this is like short tank here, we get a sample.
That's right. Invest, it'll be great.
Don't get lost in there.
So I'm here today to talk to you about the king tide that we just experienced over the last week or so. And king tides happen, it's a gravitational issue. When the sun and the moon are in a specific position, it causes us to have these much higher tides later in the year. And what you can see from that red portion of the graph on the right side is that in the early parts of the year, you see a much lower peak tide. And in the later parts of the year, usually September, October and December, and November and December, you see these much higher higher tides occurring. And when the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration predicts the tides, they are doing it based on the impact of gravity. So this is the NOAA graphic from our recent high tide. The blue lines are what was predicted in terms of the high and low tide elevations. The red is what we actually observed. And so on September 14th, we exceeded the threshold for flooding in this city. And that that number is 1.3 feet NAVD. We didn't expect to start seeing these king tides having an impact in the city for a number of days after that. And then what occurred is over the period of September 16 through the 22nd, we experienced king tides that were over two feet. Now, it's not that we've never had that before, but we've never had it sustained over the period of almost a full week, where we've had tides as high as almost 2.4 feet. We got almost up to 2.5 feet on one day. The highest king tide or the highest tide we've experienced in the last five years is 2.65, and that was a storm surge related king tide. So this last king tide was very, very significant.
How long does it does it normally stay up for?
Could be three days, could be seven days. It just depends on the particular effect of the moon and the sun. One of the challenges for us here is that we knew we were scheduled for a king tide, but the actual tide came in over a foot above the prediction. And the time was also longer, correct. And so in the end, this resulted in the most severe king tide period on record with sustained sustained tides over two feet of NAVD. So one of the things that happens when you have a very high tide that is something that most people haven't experienced before is that there are new parts of the city that end up flooding because of this. There are seawalls that end up overtopping because they've never experienced this level of king tide before. And for those areas that do regularly get inundated, they get inundated much deeper. And that's absolutely what we saw over the last few weeks. So the question you might ask is, why did it come in so much higher than predicted? There's a number of other things that influence flooding related to king tides that can make these king tides worse. Sea level rise is certainly starting to contribute to seeing these new thresholds get hit on a regular basis. Whenever there are winds out of the east, it can push the water up onto the coast, and that will also exacerbate the high tide. As we've discussed, rainfall concurrent with a a king tide will cause freshwater flooding on the roadways, even if you have tidal valves, because the water can't get out until the tide goes down. A high groundwater table, which we are currently also experiencing right now. One, a factor that a lot of people don't recognize is that if the Gulf Stream slows down, that we actually get higher temporary, but higher sea level stands. And this is also something we've been observing over the last few years, is that the Florida Current coming into the Gulf Stream has been slowing. And that's also causing an acceleration of sea level rise in our area. And then tropical storms and barometric pressure can also have a bearing on when we experience higher than normal or higher than predicted tides.
Eastbound, meaning it's the same effect you'd see, for instance, in a storm surge where where sea, like ocean water is coming toward westbound?
Correct. So the wind, the friction of the wind going over the water pushes the water up onto the coast. And then that prevents the water from leaving during a high tide, and that creates a pileup effect. So one of the new tools that we have available to us is the University of Miami is working with the South Florida Water Management District to model the tides every 10 days. And the red line there that you see is the predicted NOAA tide elevations. And over the course of this last two weeks, where that red line is our threshold for flooding in the city, what you can see is that they were modeling that the tides were going to be about a foot over the predicted tide elevations and that for a number of days. And again, this is from the 24th, so this is coming into the more current timeframe that they had predicted that it would be high. We've been really lucky over the last few days that the tide has come back down, and I'll show you a graphic on that in just a minute. But then the question is, what what's the city doing? From a proactive standpoint, we prioritize drainage improvements during the dry season to make sure that we are doing as much as we can during the dry part of the year so that once the wet season comes, we've done everything we can to prepare all of our neighborhoods for this next coming rainy season. There was a lot of discussion about maintenance. We inspect every tidal valve four times a year. Each tidal valve gets looked at high tide and low tide during that that inspection. So we're actually looking at every tidal valve eight times a year, high tide and low tide four times a year. And then if we ever get calls that there's a concern, then we go out and reinspect. We place delineators at the edge of roadways that are adjacent to water, waterways so that people can tell where the road stops and the canal begins. We deploy no wake signs through a network of pre assigned locations. And then as we get additional calls, we deploy additional no wake signs throughout these neighborhoods. Those are primarily deployed to prevent larger high clearance vehicles from going too rapidly across the roadways and forcing water up into private properties and into homes or garages. And then we communicate regularly about the king tides. We send out a postcard to the impacted areas. The mayor puts out a letter every year for right right before king tide season to let people know what they can do and the things that the city is doing to address those concerns. From the standpoint of reactive, when, once we get into a king tide situation, we respond, we prioritize all of our inspection staff to respond to inspections in the areas that are being impacted by flooding. We inspect and repair tidal valves should there be an issue. We provide signage for certain traffic concerns. We remove ponded water at locations where the water is trapped at low tide. If the tide doesn't get low enough for the tidal valve to open, we will go out and remove that water. And then there are certain areas where the water simply gets trapped, it can't get out in any way, shape or form, and we provide support to to remove that ponded water. And we coordinate with code enforcement on identifying and citing private properties that are having their seawall overtop and creating that nuisance flooding in those neighborhoods. And then we actively implement short term solutions wherever possible to reduce flooding. And then future improvements, you've just heard quite a bit about the future improvements that we're moving forward with. We have an existing seawall master plan. We're currently looking to accelerate the design of a number of critical seawalls where we're seeing regular overtopping. As you know, we're moving forward. As you know, we're moving forward with the next set of neighborhoods in the Phase 1 of the Stormwater Master Plan, and we are advancing the Fortify Lauderdale efforts to finish the design work for the additional neighborhoods. And then we've also initiated and are close to completing our Phase 2 of the seawall master plan. The initial seawall master plan only included the city seawalls that were adjacent to roadways, and now we've expanded that to make sure we've included all of city-owned seawalls. And we're looking at city-owned seawalls that are in parks. So key points that I want you to take away is that the September king tide was an extraordinary event, certainly the most severe king tide that we've experienced in the city. That there's a lot of different factors that have contributed to that impact, and that we are responding to concerns, but it's important to understand that this is the ocean, and that there's a limit to what the city can do to address an impact that's being caused by the ocean. And then these future projects will continue to help us address these concerns by reducing the frequency, intensity, and duration of flooding. Fast forward, of course, this, this presentation was developed a week ago, and so to get you up to date, over the course of the last few days, as of September 27th, that one foot above the predicted has now fallen down to about three to four inches. So we're not having such extreme tides right now. As of this morning, the tide was just slightly above or just right near our threshold for flooding. So we're gonna have a break for a little bit of time, if this trend holds, and October 14th is our next predicted king tide date.
So there was no flooding on Cordova Road or in Merle Fog Park area because of the new seawall height?
Merle Fog did not have flooding that I was aware of. Cordova, we do continue to have some issues there, and we're working very closely with Stormwater Engineering to try to brainstorm how we can address some of those concerns.
So there's still flooding on Cordova?
There is still flooding on Cordova between 7th and 9th, and we also have flooding around 11th Court. It's being caused by different issues. At 11th Court, we believe the water is running down 12th Street, and it's gathering in a low point on Cordova. So it's not because of the city seawall at that location. Between 7th and 9th, we're investigating a number of potential sources for why that's still creating some flooding. But certainly, again, the frequency, duration, and intensity of flooding at that location has been dramatically reduced by the installation of the seawall.
What can we do for 11th? What's the solution for that?
The solution for 11th Court is complicated, because in order for us to be a resilient community, it requires both public investment and private investment, and as long as there are private seawalls that are overtopping and pushing water into the roadways, we're gonna continue to have this concern. Once again, we've been working very closely with code enforcement. When we see a private seawall that's overtopping, code enforcement's been a great partner in going out there and citing those properties and getting them on the path to raising their seawalls, so that for the next king tide season, that those seawalls are not gonna be contributing to the problem.
Could you share with us, I'm on slide number seven. You know, I love being, in a sense, proactive as much as we can. It says actively implementing short-term solutions to reduce the flooding. What are some of those initiatives that you're implementing?
In, in some places, we're able to make adjustments to swales in the nearby area in order to help move water over. Sometimes we discover that there's a problem within the catch basin itself, and we're able to put new cement into the catch basin in order to prevent those problems. It's really a case-by-case basis to identify where the concerns are and to address those concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask you, some of that, like Cordova's, I mean, how much of that is water coming, not over the top, but from, from below coming on up?
Well, that's one of the things we're investigating. We, we have a system of one-way valves in that seawall, and we believe that some of those valves may be failing, and so that's one of the things that we're looking at.
That's a more difficult problem.
They're all challenging problems, Commissioner.
If it's a problem, it's difficult. All right, anything else? Okay, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Moving on to Business 4, process for establishing an emergency medical service special district. Who will be presenting on that?
And we have Laura Reese coming up to make that presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Laura Reese, Acting Assistant City Manager. I'm here today because you all received our recommendation from the Fire Rescue Advisory Board in the month of May to recommend that you consider establishing a new, a new district. And so that is the background. So today, we're gonna go through the background and context, fire rescue budget breakdown, the estimated taxing district cost, and the process for establishing the district. So again, we come to you today, Yvette Matthews and Keith Farrell are here with me from the Office of Management and Budget for any detailed questions about the budget breakdown, and we have our fire chief here as well. Again, we're gonna go through the Fire Rescue Advisory Board. They had five recommendations for you. We're just gonna focus in on one of them today, which is the recommendation related to establishing the fire taxing district. Really, one of the reasons this has come up is over the years, we've been going to full cost recovery for the fire assessment fee. But in recent years, the number of EMS calls has grown quicker than the number of fire-related expenses. So this year, as part of the adopted budget, we actually lowered the fire assessment by $10, because that was the full cost recovery. So staff has been looking for alternate ways of generating additional revenue other than our regular ad valorem in order to support these costs. So in the month of August, our city attorney's office drafted a memo to you that outlined what the special district would consist of. And so a lot of the information I'm sharing today is just stealing excerpts from that memo, in addition to providing information on the finances in our own budget. So the fire rescue budget can really be broken down into three categories. One of the categories relates to fire suppression. Those are the costs that we can charge as part of the fire assessment fee. What's unique about the fire assessment fee is it has to be a special benefit to a property. So we can't charge for rescue-related services, because those don't benefit the actual property. So those costs in the 2025 budget are estimated at $66.9 million, and we're able to recover $64.2 million of them through the fire assessment fee and other miscellaneous revenue, and that would include inspection fees that we charge to businesses when our fire inspectors go in to look at the quality of their buildings every year, or their compliance. So the second category I'll skip to is ocean rescue. Ocean rescue is actually a function in the fire rescue budget, and part of the fire, part of the ocean rescue expense is funded through parking revenues. At a certain point many years back, the community came to the commission and said, please install parking meters along this street, and we'll use the funds from the parking meters to help pay for ocean rescue. So we, we've continued that practice for many years. And so that brings in around $1.2 million from the parking fund to support the ocean rescue lifeguards in that area. And the third category is EMS, and that's what we're gonna be talking about today. So these are some back-of-the-napkin estimates based upon the data we see in the budget. We estimate that $54.3 million is the cost that it takes to run EMS. And of that, $12.6 million is already recovered through charges from users, and that's transport fees.
Billing medical insurance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so it would be billing medical insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance when somebody's transported to the hospital. Some of those are our residents, and some of those are folks who are visiting our city and maybe get into an accident or experience a medical incident while they're in our community.
Bill for services rendered or just for transport? That was, that had come up before.
It's just the transport.
Okay.
Just the transport, okay.
Okay. So if we're giving services, that's not, that, we don't recover any of the actual services or meds given?
So you mean, like, on-site?
Yeah, meds given.
When we respond to a call?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, there's no charge for that, it's the transport.
Okay.
Okay. So the, again, that total cost is $42 million, and so we would estimate that if this is turned into a millage rate, so and put onto the tax bill, that the millage rate would be .7353, and that's, would result in a cost of approximately $426 for an average single-family home, and that's not including condos. So that's the average price of a single fam, or the average taxable value of a single-family home in the city of Fort Lauderdale. So there's some neighboring municipalities we point to as examples of this new ad valorem, Miami Dade Fire Rescue, Pinellas County, North Port Fire Rescue, and our most recent, or closest neighbor is the city of Pompano Beach. Pompano Beach did a voter referendum when they implemented theirs many years back, and they have a cap of .5 mils. So at the time you adopt it, you'd have to set what your, your cap is on the rate.
Laura, just to clarify, Pompano Beach did that, they elected to do a voter referendum, it wasn't a requirement?
Correct. Or, I don't know if it was at the time, but they, yeah, they chose to at that point, yep. So Florida Special District Handbook talks about some reasons they, you might create a special district. The two that we identified that might be applicable in this case are to finance, construct, and operate, and maintain capital, infrastructure, facilities, or services. So this would generate additional revenue that would help us to fund our services in the city. And the second item is to increase accountability and transparency of public resources. If we were to implement an EMS district, we could only use those funds to support EMS services, and there would be transparency through a separate line item on the tax bill that indicates how much it costs for those services. So right now, dependent special district would be the only option we'd have without going to the state for legislative action, and because of that, there's special requirements that we'd have to follow. Really, an ordinance of the county or municipality is what is required. To Susan's point, we wouldn't have to go for voter referendum in this case. A tax could be implemented through two readings of an ordinance by this commission, and the governing board would be determined by this board, similar to the OPEB board, where you meet separately. It could be you, or you could appoint folks to represent you, but ultimately, similar to the Sunrise Key taxes, they'd have to come to you to be voted in each year. If that, if there's, if that was done, there, the potential timeline would be in November, we would need to engage a consultant to study the services. We'd wanna make sure we're aligned on how we're doing our allocations. We would suggest if we choose to do that, we might have that same consultant look at our fire, our fire assessment fee as well, so that we're looking at the two together to go to full cost recovery. In December, we would probably need to target first and second readings of an ordinance to create the new district, and within 30 days of the ordinance, we would have to give it to the property appraiser. So the target would be January, the due date would be March 1st. So with that, understanding that if we did create this new millage rate for our city, it would count against our 10-mil cap. So in the state of Florida, we're really regulated in terms of how we set our millage rates. So although it would be listed separately on the tax bill, it would count against our 10-mil cap. And that would be included in our annual maximum millage adjustment calculations that we do each year. If you're above a certain amount, it requires additional votes. So for example, in the past, this, for fiscal year 2025, we would need 2/3 votes if we were going to 5.3 or higher. And so because it would be the, the full city, it would count against that 5.3, so. There'd be some ongoing administrative impacts with special meetings and budget requirements similar to what we have for Sunrise Key, and we'd have to keep a close eye on cost recovery and accounting for the district. So we put together a summary table of how the impacts would flow. For taxpayers, the group would be the same for a millage rate or for the special district. It would be all residents and businesses who pay taxes in the city of Fort Lauderdale. In terms of administration, we would probably have some additional complexity in tracking of expenses, because our firefighters are also paramedics, so we have to find an allocation of how we allocate the costs if somebody does both things. And typically, we do that based upon call volume. Revenue generated, this would generate up to $42 million this year if it was implemented. So you could implement it a quarter, a half, full, you know, wherever you would want to go in terms of the allocation. And the flexibility would be limited, where we could use those funds only on EMS-related services. But depending on whether or not you all kept the millage rate the same in, for normal operating purposes, you could choose to lower that millage rate slightly if you're going to create a new millage rate. And so we just wanted some direction and input from you after we shared back what we, or, or any questions of something we might have missed.
Any questions?
Mr. Chief, did you, Chief Colan, you sort of moseying in this direction. Did you want to put a comment in here? It looks like you want to add something.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. No, I have nothing to add to it. They did an amazing job on the report. I think it's very thorough and shows the benefits of having it.
I have a question. Are you finished, Commissioner? Did you finish?
I have a few things. I mean, I could go before or after you, it's your call.
Go ahead.
Okay, I mean, one of the things, I'm looking, it's an interesting thought here. We went through this for a while. The money that's generated here, as opposed to through general millage, the money that comes through here stays within the EMS, it doesn't get commingled. So it's not like you raise the money, and next thing you know, it ends up going for buying light bulbs somewhere else. This money for this stays for EMS.
Yes, there would be separate tracking of the revenues received and how we spent them.
But I didn't realize this till I saw this. You'd have to create an actual board that oversees this, is that what you'd have to do?
Yes, it could be you selecting yourselves, similar as what you do for the CRA board. You're the CRA board, and you're the commission. That's typically, that's how others have done it.
And this would be, as opposed to the fire fee, which is a flat dollar fee, which is regressive, this would be, I mean, the exact opposite. This goes, it's tied to the millage rate.
Right, it would be the same as the millage rate, it'd be based on taxable value that's set by the property appraiser.
And if you look at this $42 million line item here, it, it is and isn't raising, well, it is raising taxes, but it's not raising, quote, millage rate per se, but that would free $42 million in general. This is things that are normally paid in general fund, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, could you earmark the money saved from general fund for something specific, so it doesn't get just chewed up, or you can't do something like that?
You could, in one year. The commission really can't obligate another commission in a future year.
Yeah.
But you could, in the year you adopt this rate, you could say this year, we'd like to spend it on a certain thing in the general fund, if you don't lower that millage rate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, just a couple of questions. Now, the, the money that is used, in our budget today, we cover the expenses for EMS operations, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this extra money, what's it gonna be used for?
It could be used on anything the commission desires, so.
So do we really need to raise taxes right now? I mean, this is what it is, it's a, it's a tax raise.
Yep, it would be a way to increase taxes or to dedicate a millage for a particular purpose.
Well, I know, I, I get that, but I'm saying, do we need it?
So Mayor, I, I could chime in as well. You know, we've talked about accelerating various infrastructure programs. So by freeing up money in the general fund would allow us to dedicate money to seawalls, bridges, sidewalks, or roadway resurfacing. And we could do that on a pay-as-you-go basis. I mean, if you were gonna do full cost recovery, that would generate $40 million of pay-as-you-go capital a year, or you could bond it if you wanted to just do half-cost recovery and bond the rest to do a lot of those programs. So, I mean, again, it would be up to the commission, but we could give you a menu of items that we could.
But why don't we just, but not to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but why don't we just bond out for the purposes for which it's intended? For example, if we want sidewalks, let's do a, let's do a bond, so the folks in the community know exactly what the money is being used for, instead of this, you know, switching funds around to replace other funds that, that we could use for, you know, for, for projects that, that we do need. So if we wanna do a bond, if we, if we need to raise money for sidewalks, if we need to raise- to raise money for additional seawalls or any kind of resiliency project, that's then let's do that. Let's be straightforward rather than saying, oh, let's raise money through EMS and that will free up money in the general fund to be able to use on these projects. I think the public would be, I think they'd appreciate our being more honest with how we're actually, you know, raising the money and using the money rather than trying to, you know, do this, you know, switcheroo kind of thing where we're raising money for EMS, but we're really not going to use it for EMS, we're going to use it for other things.
And and you're talking about a general obligation bond that we would put to referendum as opposed to a revenue bond that we could issue, you know, at any time. And certainly, that's an option as well. You know, as far as timing goes, the next real opportunity would be in the November of twenty, like, two years from now would be the opportunity to do that.
Okay.
Well, and Mayor, the other thing I'll add to that, too, is you may recall when Broward County went out for a referendum to build a new county courthouse.
Right.
The residents voted it down. And the way that the county courthouse got built was through other sources of general fund revenue that the county was able to dedicate towards a non-GO bond. So you may find yourself, if you want to build a city hall, in need of some source of funds to be able to pay for that because they're not always receptive to GO bonds for government buildings. We were fortunate with the police station and the parks that people actually saw the value in that, but they may or may not see the value in that for a city hall, just like they didn't see the value in it for a federal courthouse. I'm sorry, for a county courthouse. So something to be mindful of. It's it's not bad to have a source of revenue that we could use to pledge towards projects if we need to.
And you could also argue the opposite coin of what you you put out there, you know, you're raising money, where's it going to? You could actually say, hey, listen, this money is going for EMS. You see, this dollar is staying for the EMS portion of it. So for that part, it's more transparent. And things such as speed humps or whatnot, it does free money for something like, things like that, too. I'm not saying for or against it. I think it's interesting to look at. And Susan, you're asking us just to look at this because there's a deadline coming up. Just is that what we're looking at?
We don't necessarily need direction today, but we would probably want it, you know, towards the end of October, early November. Just direction, I mean, Laura, you know, we had talked about we would need a study and it doesn't cost a lot of money. We're going to go ahead and just proceed with that. So we'll have it ready if we need it, if we get that direction rather than wait. So we can bring it back at an upcoming meeting to just follow up and see, you know, what your thoughts are on that.
It is interesting. I don't know how I really, I don't, I'm not sure how I think about it, but I think it's worth at least looking into. That's my thought.
I have a question. When we talked about the the average household that would be was four hundred and twenty-six dollars that would be affected on their property taxes, what is that average value of that home that we identified?
Five eighty.
Five hundred and eighty thousand dollars and?
And that would be with full cost recovery. So there's, as we had said, multiple options. You could phase that in over a four-year period where you do, you know, twenty-five percent in the first year, fifty, et cetera, or just make an election to say, hey, it'll only fund half. Up to you. Or you could fund the whole thing and lower the operating millage. So there's lots of different scenarios that we can consider.
Yeah, and if I can chime in, in addition to the items that Susan mentioned, you know, when we show you our revenue sufficiency model, there are unfunded needs, not just in the upcoming year and future years. The chief whispered in my ear, you know, you're you're looking to approve maybe the safer grant tonight? That will have over six million dollar impact in the third year. That we'll have to find a way to fund that as well.
Fourth year.
Well, there'll be three, yeah, three years of safer pain in year four is when it kicks in. Yep. So there's there's things like that, you know, as you consider the CRA sunsetting, not sunsetting, this is a source of revenue that can maybe offset some of those costs. There are some unfunded needs on the table.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? All right, there being none, thank you so much. So what's the next steps if the commission decide, if the commission decides to move forward? What are the next steps?
So I think next steps would be we'd start bringing ordinances. We can, in a conference meeting, bring you some scenarios that I just talked about, you know, a four-year phase in or, you know, implementing full cost recovery with a millage rate decrease and different levels of those. So we could provide, like I said, some different scenarios about what that would look like.
Well, you know, Susan, I have to be honest with you, you know, if you start, if you, we'll let, we'll let the commission, you know, of course, see further details on this and I'm sure the community will weigh in on it. But if you add forty-something million dollars as for available funds in the general fund, okay, you can bet assured that all eyes are going to be on it from every direction and everyone's going to want a piece of it. And we'll never see any of it for these, you know, these wonderful ideas that we have about improving our infrastructure. You know that different departments within our city are going to think that their, a piece of it's going to be theirs and we'll never see any money for the improvements that we intend. So just, just keep that in mind.
And I would hope that not, wouldn't be the case, but I understand what you're saying.
Let's not be naive, okay.
There's no way we could earmark that, is there?
Well, I mean, you could for the budget process.
Yeah, but, okay, but year by year, then the next two, three years.
And then again, if you do, if you do a revenue bond and bond it, I mean, you have that debt service obligation that you have to, that has to come first, right?
But it's specifically for that, right here, this, you loosen, you free up some of that money for the, in the general fund and that's for any purpose. It's not for, it's not for a specific purpose.
And in that analysis that we bring back, we can also look at some geo opportunities as well. And, you know, I've had Public Works give me some a hundred million dollar of a GO bond and what we can do with that and, you know, two hundred million of a GO bond. So we can bring those back along with that because that's another alternative to assist in, you know, funding all those infrastructure needs.
Okay.
Question, I'm sorry, this, could you define for us, for our neighbors, the difference between increasing the ministry rate without doing a special district? How does that?
Yep, same thing. You could, you could do that.
Okay, so what is the benefit of doing a special district?
Right, so that's what we tried. I thought that question might come up. So we did this chart and it just compares one versus the other. Really, there's accountability for how the funds are spent. So if you, if you create a special district for EMS, the funds that are generated through that, it'll be a separate millage rate on the tax bill and that amount will be dedicated only to EMS. So that's the difference. It's the transparency and the accountability of how we spend those funds.
And from an accounting perspective, we could set it up as a special revenue fund that has its own financial statements. There's requirements as far as website postings, et cetera. So there's, you know, a little bit of that. But from a financial perspective, you could just do that same millage increase to generate an additional forty-one point six million dollars and it's the, it would be the same from a bottom-line perspective.
Thank you. Yes, it would impact the neighbors the same, it just would be the transparency.
If we actually did a millage rate increase.
Yes.
Which we haven't done in eighteen years.
Well, if it's six of one, half a dozen of the other, I agree with you a hundred percent. It's just a little, it's a, you know.
Well, but I, I think, I think the issue is one of transparency because we know that our costs, right. So we, we've got, you know, we've added a number of firefighters. One of the things that I think is important, you know, when we look at how we budget, is I, I get feedback all the time about the need for increases in public safety. But at the same time, I also get people pushing back and saying they don't want us to raise taxes. And those two things simply are incompatible. And when we put it out this way, we're demonstrating directly to our residents exactly where that money is going. So if folks want more firefighters out there, if they want faster response times, you know, we can say, okay, this is what it's going to cost to get us there. We're going, if we're asking for more money, that money is going directly towards salary and equipment for the personnel that are responding to your calls for services. It's not getting lost in this vast five hundred million dollar general fund budget. You know exactly what it's going for. And I think people are more comfortable with that. I think there's more accountability and there's more transparency when we look at that. I think that's one of the reasons that that I would be supportive of this.
Yeah, but, but by doing that, you're raising taxes. Whether you raise it in column A or column B, it's still raising taxes.
Not, not, not necessarily because you don't need to raise the millage rate specifically or you could lower the millage rate. There's no requirement that you raise the millage rate. You could lower the millage rate to offset the increase in, in the EMS. So it's, it's not, it's, it's not mandatory that you keep the millage the same. If we decide to shift part of the budget out of the general fund to a special revenue fund, we have the option of cutting the millage rate to offset that.
Yes, we're all aware of that. But the point is that the argument, as it was originally presented, was to free up the money in the general fund so that we could use it for other purposes. It wasn't for the intention of lowering the millage rate. It was for keeping the millage rate the same so we have additional funds to undertake other projects that that we are trying to prioritize. So, you know, it, again, it's a, it's a shell game to, to say, we're going to, we're going to have a special taxing district or we're going to have a special enterprise fund and then, and then pretend like we're not going to really use the money for the purposes which was intended. We're already covering EMS services. We're having no problem doing that. And, and to say that we need to, we need to, you know, establish a separate taxing district or a separate fund is still the bottom line when you add it all up. You add up the millage rate, you add up the special taxing district, you add up the general obligation bonds, you add it all up, it's going to be an increase in taxes. So, and, and this commission may decide to do that and there may be a purpose for it and we may find a justification for it. But I just want everyone to be clear, you know, when I say everybody, I mean out in the community, that we need to be clear that what we're doing is to generate additional funds. We are raising taxes and we are doing it through a process that is intended to supplement the funds we, we now spend on emergency medical services.
Well, you could look at it another way, too. I think it's been mentioned by several of us up here, you know, there's no, there's never been an appetite to raise the millage rate. We've, we've done the best we can to keep it the way it is, but as time goes on, we're always looking to add police, add firefighters, add services here. You know, at the end of three years, obviously, we're going to have to now start funding that, what's, that gap from the safer grant. And now, and the safer grant doesn't get a third EMS person to every station there. I mean, Chief Colan, come up just for one second. I apologize, but you're getting a good exercise here. How many physical stations do we have? We went through this before, but for the public, how many actual buildings do we have physical stations?
So we currently have twelve fire stations.
And of those, how many, how many EMS units do we have?
There are eighteen ambulances in the city.
Okay, and our thought, I'll get back to you in a second. Our thought was to eventually have three people in every one of those EMS and we, little by little, we're phasing them and right now, we have how many?
Currently, there's five, seven.
Okay, and with the safer grant, we'll go up to what?
So it'll be six more. Uh, roughly six more, depending on staffing for that particular day.
And so we still have the gap and our goal, and we want the goal setting is to have every one of them have three people per. And at some point, we are going to have to have more money to reach that goal. And the question is, is it worthwhile doing this type of a model to get there as opposed to raising the millage rate? You know, you're, you're going to have to get money somehow and you want to make sure that the money you raise actually goes for the purposes, you know, earmarked for, for what you're, for getting that third person on there. It's just two ways of looking at the same, the same scenario.
And, and there's also the P three with Station 117, which is located off of Los Solos. That'll be coming online in the next three years and that would require additional staffing for that station as well. So when you look at the growth of, of the city, the density of the city and our ability to provide the same level of service that we currently do, we're going to need to grow with that demand. This would be providing an opportunity for us to meet that growth need.
So you're, we're seeing several, several scenarios here where EMS is going to be costing us more money. So you said you don't want to raise the millage rate and you're going to have to raise more money one way or another to, to meet that demand.
All right, well, let's see what that looks like as you prepare the, you know, the next Okay, thank you, Chief. All right, moving on to business five, this is the Eighteen Northwest First Avenue Acquisition Presentation. This is the building just across the street, right?
Where we hold community court and Anthony Verhado is here to give you some information.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Anthony Verhado, Assistant City Manager. I'm not here to talk about flooding or taxes. So this is about Eighteen Northwest First Avenue.
You're completely irrelevant.
Yeah, not germane to the topics today. So based on the last conversation that happened at the previous city commission meeting, we thought it'd be a good opportunity for us to put a presentation together and give you some more details on why we think this purchase aligns with the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights CRA plan as well as why it would be an overall good investment and get direction from you on moving forward. So just to give you an orientation of where this is, as you said, Mayor, it is a little to the north of us. It's right behind the McDonald's on Broward Boulevard and just across the street from the bus terminal. On this map, you can see color-coded what is owned by various government entities, including the county, the city, the feds, and the state.
You say, you say north. This is due west of the, what used to be the city hall, correct?
Exactly. I'll show you another graphic here in a second that'll help you out. I wanted to put this graphic in just to show the importance of the bus terminal in that location. There are fourteen lines that run through that terminal countywide, making this, I mean, as we know, this is a transportation hub and it's very important for different options when it comes to mass transit. A little bit of information about the property itself, it was constructed in nineteen fifty-five and the original use was a printing company. There's a convenience store on the west side of the building that takes up a small portion of the overall square footage, about a third, I believe, and it was in operation as of nine, as of two thousand and seven. The land area is seven thousand two hundred and fifty square feet and the building area is three, six thousand three hundred and eighty square feet. It's also in our most permissive zoning district, which is in our downtown rack, which is city So a little bit about available funding options that we have, just to give you some information that we did come to realize recently, the purchase price of the building is three million dollars. That's what the owner has requested. The appraised value, I think, averages around two point four million dollars. The CRA is not permitted to purchase property above the appraised value. So there would have to be a combination of CRA funds if we choose to move forward in that path and general fund. So it would have to come from fund balance from general fund. A little bit about the community redevelopment area. So the green area there is the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Area. It's roughly Sunrise Boulevard to Broward Boulevard, the western terminus of the municipal boundaries and approximately federal highway. In this area, it terminates at Andrews and the little red dot in the lower right-hand corner of the screen represents the location of the building. The CRA was established in nineteen ninety-five through the CRA redevelopment plan, which has been updated four times. There's also a, an implementation plan that was developed in two thousand and eight along with a five-year program that was established in two thousand and thirteen. These documents are all used to lay the groundwork for how we can address the slum and blight that was identified in the area as well as a path forward to get more redevelopment and interest in reinvestment in the area. So there are two aspects of the plans that we think align with the purchase of this building. One is in the implementation plan. There was a highlighted need to reduce the number of convenience stores in the overall area of the CRA. The, the determination was that there's an overabundance and that we should be addressing that by removing some of the, some of the convenience stores. We also believe that this aligns with the enhanced public sector investment and this could create an environment later on which is conducive to long-term investment and support for the viability of this particular area. Just to give you a little idea of what we deal with in terms of calls for service, the calls for service for this location are about a hundred and fifty-eight between police and fire. The bus depot across the street is twelve hundred and ninety-five roughly, but I did get an updated analysis from the police department. They looked at June first, twenty twenty-two to September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and it was roughly forty-four hundred calls for service in the general area. So that encompasses more than just this location and the bus depot, it's in the general vicinity. This graphic, it's oriented a little bit strange. The south is on the right-hand side of the screen, the north is on the left. But just to give you an idea of some of the development that's either under review, has been approved, under construction, or has been completed in the general vicinity. And you can see the blue dot is the building that we're talking about and the yellow, I'm sorry, the blue star and the yellow star is the former location of our city hall. So I looked at a four-block radius just to give you a general idea of what's coming online. Either under approval or approved or under construction or completed, you've got about ninety-five hundred units that are coming online in the future. About, well, just shy of four hundred thousand square feet of commercial space and that would include restaurant, retail, and office. We also have the One Stop Shop, as you know, which is to the north, the bus depot, as I mentioned, and then the Brightline Station a little bit further to the west. If you're interested, the Brightline Station is about 450 feet. As the crow flies from this location, about 1,000 feet if you take a pedestrian path. And then, just to give you an orientation of where the government facility, so, again, the old location of City Hall, could potentially be redeveloped or established as another City Hall location, and then the Broward County facility that they are looking to relocate to in the future.
You're the blue box, right?
I didn't, yeah, generally, it's the blue box. It's really just up and to the left of the blue box. There's a little square. So, what we see is growth potential. As you know, Brightline is expanding its services. They're adding additional stops to their overall system, and they're expanding it to Tampa. Broward County Transit is seeking to expand rail services east of I-95, and they are looking to place a station somewhere in the vicinity of Broward and Sunrise. And then, as I mentioned, the increase in residential units and commercial square footage, which will really lend into that multimodal aspect that's going on in this area. Potential revenue, so if we were to purchase the property, the revenue from the rental of the facility, both from the city side and as well as the existing tenant, would be paid to the CRA. The reason I think that's very important is because as we're having discussions on whether or not the CRA should be allowed to sunset or move forward. If it's allowed to move forward, we all know that the county's portion of those tax increments will not be part of it. It would only be the city side. This would actually give a revenue stream if there was an extension to the CRA that could be utilized to leverage other investment opportunities. And then, there's the potential to recapture up to 50% of the capital cost of the purchase within about five years. And we also believe that due to the area and the increase in the densities and everything that we're seeing, that it's an appreciating asset.
Who would we be renting this to?
So, I'll get to that in just a second, but there is an existing tenant. So, that tenant's lease is, I believe, still valid until 2027. So, at that point, we could either renegotiate that lease or do something different, and I have a slide that will cover that in just a second. So, we asked Colliers to do a base market rent analysis. And so, what they determined is that on the low end, it would be about $25 per square foot, and on the high end, about $35 per square foot. That would net you over a five-year period, roughly 1.1, getting close to 1.2 million to 1.5 million. So, for future uses, we have short-term and long-term ideas of how we can use it. So, the city would occupy the building. As Susan mentioned, we do have the Community Court located in that building. In order for us to occupy it, we would have to pay market rent, which we would have to do in any location where we're going to put Community Court. So, that is one of the tenants that would be in there for the time being, Commissioner. And then, that revenue, along with the revenue generated from the other tenant, would go to the CRA. Again, that could be a revenue generator for the CRA if it were to be extended.
And in addition, if we decided to partner with another agency that wants to provide services there, we could charge them rent as well.
Yes.
Who's paying rent for Community Court right now?
We do.
Yeah, we pay rent.
We do? With the county or just us alone?
Just us.
Or with the court?
Just us.
Just us.
And we pay to who, the owner?
To the owner of the building.
To the owner. We're a tenant.
And we only use it one day a week?
We only use it one day a week, but we're in discussions of expanding that. And just a little bit about Community Court in this location. It's a good location for a lot of reasons. We've heard from many organizations that run community courts. You need to have it where the people are. But the road on the north side of it is particularly interesting because it's actually not a street. We own it. So, it gives us flexibility for shutting it down during Community Court so we can use that space to have those services come in. And then, long-term, we could market the space to align with the CRA and the redevelopment plans. We could demolish the building and market it for redevelopment, or it could be combined with the neighboring site. We all know there's a property that was approved and has entitlements just to the east of it, on the same block. However, it's not uncommon for development to change over time and the scope to change and come back and amend things. And then, if there's a need for a future city facility, we could use that as well. Right now, we have a need for an additional pump station in that basin. We are looking at locations. This isn't a viable location, but in the future, that would be something that we could do if that was needed at that time. So, again, the benefits of acquisition. The city would gain control of a key property in a blighted area. While it is a small property, it does contain that convenience store and is in very close proximity to the bus depot. The acquisition would generate revenue to the CRA. We'd be able to reduce the number of convenience stores, which is directly in alignment with the redevelopment plan. There would be flexibility on marketing to desirable businesses. We could allow the space to be used for incubator or small business startups. We would give the city a suitable location for Community Court to maintain its current operations until another opportunity arose. And I already talked about it being marketed to a developer for consolidation. So, next steps. We have reached out to the Flagler Village Civic Association. I'm on their agenda for this Thursday to give a presentation, answer any questions they may have, so I'll have feedback after that meeting occurs. We need to identify the funding sources based on the consensus of the City Commission on whether or not to move forward with this. We would finalize the agreement terms, present the purchase to you as the CRA board for consideration. That would get us into a due diligence period of roughly 90 days where we could execute the closing of the property and then determine what the market rent for the vacant space would be so that we could generate that revenue, as I stated earlier. And the approximate timeline for the whole process would be 90 to 120 days from approval. And that's my presentation.
Okay, great. Any questions? Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes. Our CRA Committee Board, Advisory Board, what is their recommendation with this?
So, they voted in support of us moving forward with the acquisition. There were comments about, there were concerns about money being put in this location for the acquisition of the building, but overall, they supported it and moved it forward.
What were the numbers? You know the vote number or?
Oh, gosh, I don't remember the vote numbers. I want to see. Four to two.
Okay. All right. I've said this many, on many occasions, that still, my concern with this, I understand the need for the building, and what we're doing there is very positive. My concern is using CRA funding for this. So, if we are able to identify through general funds, that would be something I would support. But utilizing that CRA funding today, I don't see where I can agree with that, even with the income stream. I'm having difficulties. Maybe you can go in a little bit more detail because you're saying that there'll be income from the tenant that we rent to give money back to the CRA, but I don't see that matching the monies that we're putting in.
So, it would be the city paying rent to the CRA?
The city and the current tenant.
And the current tenant combined.
Yeah.
So, over a five-year period, that would be 1.5 million at $35 per square foot. I don't know what the current tenant is paying. You say operating expenses are $10 a square foot. So, does that reduce the income?
No, the OpEx is just that pass-through, right? So, that would be utilities, et cetera. So, you know, the income would, it would come in, and then, that is a net.
That's a set-off.
Yeah, that's a set-off.
So, it's not really 1.5 million. It's probably more like one if it's at $35 a square foot. See, I mean, commercial space is usually triple net, so I don't know. Is this, explain to me a little bit about whether operating expenses are on top of the rent or are they incorporated in the rent? I mean, is Colliers here to explain to us, you know, their understanding?
Mayor, I just need to also ask a question before we hear from Colliers. So, Commissioner Beasley Pittman, I need to understand why you have an objection with CRA funds being used for this project?
For one reason, it would deter funding from the projects that we are looking forward to on the quarter. I want to see that funding because we haven't determined yet if we're going to sunset. And that funding that's going to be utilized, I would rather see it utilized in those projects that are coming up towards the sixth drunk quarter.
Well, this is the Northwest Progresso Flagler CRA.
I agree with that, but also, we know that a large amount of funding and activity, building and development has happened on the east side, and we're still waiting on the west side for much development.
But did we ever say no?
Have we ever said no?
The projects coming on the west side?
I can, we can get an answer to that. I'm sure there's some things that have been delayed or said no to.
Not because of the city.
Well...
No, we're very supportive.
We've been supportive, but we need to be more supportive because it's my understanding when we designed and went into this agreement with this, we were going to build on the east and come to the west.
I just find this to be, I find this to be a classic CRA project.
True, but location is where I have an issue with.
Well, that's interesting. Okay.
All right. Interesting part of it, again, because of the location. We are a complete CRA, and we need to see development also on the east side, which we have not seen. And when we went into that agreement, the agreement was we would start on the east and come west, and we're almost sunsetting. So, why would we spend those funds and we can utilize it in that identified area? Again, we could, I'm looking at, we had talked about opportunities to use funding from general fund for other projects that we had no qualms with sending money into. So...
Such as what?
Such as what? That property that was on the intercoastal where the IRS had wanted a bid for $3 million. We didn't get the bid, but we were willing to utilize whatever money that was identified for that particular property. So, if we can move...
The need of the state.
We made a mistake?
No. He said the need of the state.
The need of the state.
The name of the property.
Okay, the need of the state. But when I have conversations on this dais with my colleagues and we can identify monies for things of that magnitude, and we're talking about increasing and expanding opportunities for the northwest section through the CRA, I would rather see it go there. Again, I have no qualms about supporting funding for the building that will be used to address situations with our homeless. My problem is the monies that are being identified.
But I don't see this as an either-or situation. I don't see, if this moves forward as a CRA project, I don't see it as a detriment to any other projects, as you mentioned, in the section of the CRA that you would like to see it go to. I look at the CRA as a total picture, but I don't see us making anyone particularly suffer or lose funding because of the fact that this might also happen. I mean, how much money do we have left in the CRA?
Mr. Woods could answer that as someone from that department, but I can, when my community comes together, they will gladly voice their opinion about this. So, when you say it's interesting, I think it's a different of opinion. So, being the voice for my district, understanding what they desire, this is my stance with it.
So, I think, I think at some point, we'll need to get more details, but what you're saying, Vice Mayor, is that there's, considering the pipeline of projects that are applying for CRA money, you're suggesting that there's already sufficient money to address the demand that is currently, that we're currently experiencing for the use of CRA dollars. And Commissioner Beasley Pittman is suggesting that perhaps that demand needs to be further met, and this money that we're looking to spend for the purchase of this property is not going to be met, especially since we're looking at the sunsetting of the CRA. But of course, keep in mind that whatever money is in the CRA as of September of 2025 has to be spent. So, if there are no applicants for that money by that time, assuming we don't extend it, then that door is shut. There can be no further demand on those funds. So, but I think it's more than just the purchase of property here. I think the issue is we need to really be focused on how we're addressing our homeless situation. And this is the only reason why I want to buy.
Yeah.
It's the only reason why I'm looking to buy this building. It's not, it's not, I understand the issue of source of funding, but I think we can all agree on the purpose. And I think that we all agree that there is a necessary purpose here to purchase this in order to accommodate our Community Court, in order to provide office space for associated services that we need as we're addressing individual homeless cases and case management, and for other purposes that are going to be associated, respite center. I mean, it's a big space, 7,000 square feet. And so, we really have a need. And as Mr. Fajardo said, it's at an area that, where the need is, where the demand is located. And so, that's been traditionally where the demand is found. And so, if we have an opportunity to buy a building here to be able to accommodate the need, I mean, let's face it, October 1, the state statute took effect today, and hopefully, this evening, we'll be passing our own ordinance. So, we need to step up our game in terms of trying to address the need for working with homeless and creating a facility that helps to process homeless needs is going to be very, very important for us. So, I think we could all agree on the need, and responding to the need, we'll have to address the source of funding. Now, I don't know how much money lately has been spent in the Flagler portion of the CRA. I know that a lot of money keeps being generated because of all the development that takes place. We're soon going to see some CRA money generated along the corridor as well as these projects hopefully get finished by the fall of next year. But those are answers that I think staff can come back to us with, but I think we should seriously consider buying this building.
And Mayor, I agree. It's a very, I think, a very important project. We can come back with an alternative funding source if that makes everyone more comfortable.
Or give us options.
We can do that.
Can I throw out a thought?
At the general direction to proceed, and we can come back with a couple other options.
So, one of the things I'd like you to explore is, years ago, we did the post office over on Avenue of the Arts, and there was some CRA funds in it, but it was also HUD funds.
For the post office? Was there HUD funds, really?
Yeah, HUD funds went, CDBG funds went into that. So, if we're going to be using this, if we're saying that the primary purpose for acquiring this property is for Community Court purposes...
Well, in the short term, you know, homeless services, but yeah.
Right. Just, let's just stop there, not say anything else, for homeless services. Let's explore whether or not we can use CDBG funds as a potential funding source for this.
I'm glad, I'm glad you two brought that up. And we're listening to this presentation here, Anthony, and we're talking about, you know, tenants and how much we're going to get and commercial uses, and go on and on. And then, the mayor, I mean, the whole purpose was, as like you said, was for homeless services here. I mean, it seemed to have morphed into something other than what the mayor had intended when he presented it last meeting. I mean, are we thinking of commercial purposes or, I thought we were just going to get social services.
They have to wait for the lease to run out for the convenience store. So, that's the commercial spot.
But that's the, but the primary reason for obtaining this is not to make money.
No, but no, no, what was being said was the city has to pay rent to the CRA if the CRA is the source of the funding for this.
But the purpose is to do exactly what you said for homeless services.
Yeah, is to fill out the space for homeless services. That's how I envisioned it.
And that's the same, me, too. And when you brought it forth, that's the whole purpose of acquiring this piece of property.
Right.
Yeah, Commissioner, the only reason I bring that up was to try and illustrate the value of the property. So, there are things that we can do with it long-term that if Community Court no longer functions in that space, let's say, for example, we design a City Hall and we design it to incorporate those types of uses, then we do have options for the property later on.
But the primary purpose of obtaining this property is...
Today.
Is what we had discussed for homeless services. For that being said, I think it's, I'm all in favor of it.
Right. Okay. So, why don't you come back with options for us and we can see, you know, and make the choice then?
Absolutely. But general direction to proceed with the purchase, correct? And we will come back with some funding source options.
And I just want to make it really clear that this site is within the CRA boundaries, correct?
Yes.
I am not in favor of spending money in any other way other than from the CRA funding. Other than that, I'm having an issue with this.
And we know there are some limitations, obviously, regarding either the dollar amount...
Don't throw that at me, please.
Either the dollar... Either the dollar amount or some others. So we'll, like I said, dig in, but we will proceed with some of those other things as far as proceeding with the purchase, because I do think it is um gonna be a valuable piece.
Right, yes.
Of the puzzle.
But also if we could get some dollar amounts of what we have left as a balance in the CRA would be very helpful.
Cause I want to make sure.
And what the demand for those are. Yes, what's in the pipeline, with the timeline. Cause as I said earlier, we have never denied anyone in the CRA. So that's why I am not in favor of not using the CRA for this project. The site lies within the CRA. And then I would also like to know what the timeline is with those projects in the pipeline, if they're running up against any particular deadlines. Um, what's the reality of all of these projects happening, uh so that we can know that. And then Susan, you mentioned, um, or no, actually the mayor mentioned that will be, if this CRA does sunset, um, the, we, we created the 501(c)(3), the Invest, Invest Fort Lauderdale?
Yeah, I think it's still in the process. There were some technical issues.
So Invest Fort Lauderdale is what we had envisioned years ago as something that would step in, right? If the CRA sunset.
Correct.
The dollars that would be left as a balance in the CRA, would those be in any way or any of those funds transferable to the Invest Fort Lauderdale that we have created?
No, it doesn't work that way.
I heard no, I heard no from the back of me.
Okay, so none of those dollars.
They, they have to be returned to the other taxing authorities.
So, so that.
Their portion does, yeah.
So the Invest Fort Lauderdale um just begins new.
Begins new. And I think they've set up in a few of the deals that they've made, some revenue opportunities that are, will be coming back to Invest Fort Lauderdale from at least two of the projects.
They did. I, I believe the number was around three hundred thousand.
Right, it, but it's, it's really minor in nature.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. But there's some, there's some revenue already set up going through.
Yeah.
Um, but we'll, we'll, um, I think Clarence was gonna be doing quarterly reports to you, so we will.
Okay.
Okay.
Work on getting something put in the, in the pipeline.
And how are we doing with that 501(c)(3) uh status that we were trying to obtain for the Invest Fort Lauderdale?
And maybe I'll defer to the attorneys, because I think there were some legal issues.
Clarence is walking up here too.
Okay, good.
And also, um, you know, speaking of CDBG funds, they could also be tapped into for um, for the build out of the space too, because uh there's gonna be a significant amount of expense for the build out. So, yes, Clarence, some, some, some thoughts on where, where are we with the CRA? What's happening? Who's at our door? Who's knocking? Who wants money?
Well, which question first? Uh, Invest Fort Lauderdale, how much money's left in the CRA? Is there any money going to be left as far as Invest Fort Lauderdale? Uh, good evening, Clarence Woods, uh manager of the CRA. Um, so we're in the process of reconstituting Invest Fort Lauderdale. As we mentioned when we had the joint uh meeting with our board and the Board of Commissioners, um, the 501(c)(3), you know, we had problems with filing it because it was a all city constituted board. So in order to get our 501(c)(3) status, it can't be an all city board, meaning the appointments that were made uh for the uh officers. So we're reconstituting uh Invest Fort Lauderdale, new bylaws, new articles. And I, I need to come and speak with each and every one of you about how we're going to do that. So I'll be setting a meeting to talk to each one of you. Uh, as far as funding that's left in the CRA, we have about, for this upcoming fiscal year, about eighteen million in our um incentive uh balance. As far as projects, we have probably about forty-five million dollars worth of projects that's gonna be, I mean, that's still in our pipeline. So there won't be any money left. We, I don't think we'll have to worry about giving any money back to any of the taxing authorities. We have.
That, those, but those, those are not completed applications. They're still, I mean, they're, they're, are they all completed applications or they're still?
They're, they're, they're applications that's waiting for us to be able to sit down and say, okay, uh, we can go before the board.
Okay.
And um, I mean, there's a number of different projects.
All right, good to know.
And, and, and we do send you all the uh status report quarterly.
Mm-hmm.
On timing, uh where we are with each project, uh the timing for each project. Here's the other thing I think we should all, you know, be aware of is that even as, if, if we sunset, the county uh just as they did for the Central Beach CRA, will allow us to extend the finished project. So there won't be any danger of losing any of the money that's already allocated. So uh projects will be able to be finished and completed.
We're still finishing beach CRA projects.
Yes.
Even though that sunset years ago.
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions of Clarence? There being none. Any further questions of Anthony? There being none. So.
I did have just one, because I'm, I'm hearing this also from the neighborhood, because this is a project in District Two. So I'm hearing, um, there is concern that if we do move forward with the purchase of this project, I'm, I'm sorry, of the site, um, you know, people come to our city, for instance, on Brightline. When they get off Brightline, it, it's not the most aesthetically pleasing, it's not the most welcoming place to get off Brightline. And you look around and you go, hmm. Now, that site right now, that site right now is um, obviously there's a, a lot of homeless population in that site. If we move forward with this, uh, we have got to make sure that we can guarantee to the neighborhood and also for folks that come to Fort Lauderdale and Brightline, that we're gonna control this site better than it has been controlled now. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I know that we haven't had the meetings yet. Flagler Village Civic Association is the neighborhood in which this resides. So we have to make sure that we are, and I saw it on the next step, so I'm happy about that. Uh, so we have to make sure that that neighborhood is um, you know, giving us all of the input that they need to do. Um, but I think that we just have to be, you know, cognizant of the fact that people are looking to us to actually clean up the site, um, if indeed we move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
May, Mayor, could I add one thought?
Yep.
So thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing that up, because in the back of my mind, that was also a concern. You know, we keep talking about how this is our new multimodal gateway for the city. And if and when we get the commuter rail coming through here, that's just going to bring even more folks to that area. So, you know, I, I, I do think that's a, a real concern and I'm glad you brought that up, because I do think that the whole idea for this is to try and clean that neighborhood up. You know, that's going to be, I think, you know, uh, an area of tremendous growth and potential long term for the city. You know, as the Vice Mayor said, that's going to be the, the first point of contact a lot of people have when they come by rail to Fort Lauderdale. So I think no matter what we do, it's imperative that it uh, it, it, it create the, the positive image that we're really looking for when we bring people to the city. So I, I, you know, again, I, I echo his thoughts and I hope that whatever we do there, you know, uh, controls what we see there right now, which is overwhelmingly negative and uh, and, and instead becomes that, you know, really positive first impression you need when people come to our city.
Okay, very good. All right, there being nothing further. Thank you, Anthony. Um, Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Herbst.
Okay, as a physician, um, do you want us to stretch our legs? We don't want to get blood clots?
You wanna take it? Okay, why don't we take a ten minute break?
Okay.
Okay. For medical reasons, mind you.
I don't want any clots.
Commissioner Herbst to present his commission report.
Thank you, Mayor. So just two things I'd like to bring to the commission's attention. The first is I understand that our, our Blue Ribbon Fire Rescue Bond Oversight Committee is due to sunset, I believe, in December. So is that, is that accurate? That was what we, with the message I got earlier today.
It's the Fire Rescue Advisory Committee.
Right. That's actually the Blue Ribbon Fire.
Oh, yeah.
The Blue Ribbon Fire Rescue.
I never understood why we called it, called it Blue Ribbon.
I thought those were the facilities.
When the bond got passed, they called it a Blue Ribbon Fire Rescue.
Advisory Board.
Actually, it's the.
I think Steve's here. I think because they also had a regular advisory board. So he's going to come up and tell us which one it is.
We set up an advisory board in 2003 or 2004 to advise city staff, a community to come together and advise city staff on the expenditure.
Right.
Of the fire bond money as we built the various fire stations.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Fire Chief Stephen Golan. Yes, so there, there's two separate. There's one that's over the fire bond.
Right.
That will not sunset until the fire bond closes out, which will require Station 13 to be completed. That's the last station in the bond.
Okay.
And then there's the Fire Rescue Advisory Committee. That is the one that is set to sunset. That was formed about two years ago.
Okay.
As an advisory committee to the, to the department.
Okay, so that's the one that's sunsetting. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
In either event, I think we should look into extending the sunset date. So like you just to bring back some recommendations on that, Chief and City Manager going forward. Second thing, Mayor, is as you're aware, there's a tremendous amount of controversy going on in my district right now in relation to a development project. And one of the things that my residents are very concerned about is just how the ULDR deals with some of these things. So at some point, I'd like to have a conversation about updates and amendments to our ULDR. I know we do them all the time. I know we have two on, for example, tonight. But I'd like to have a conversation about, you know, is there a way that we can do a comprehensive review of the ULDR? We haven't done that in a long time.
You mean citywide?
Yeah.
Citywide.
Right. So I just want to have a conversation about that. So perhaps you can just bring forward some thoughts. You know, do we continue to do it on an ad hoc basis as we notice something? You know, we, we do a quick little amendment? Or should there be a, an, a comprehensive review of the ULDR and see if there are things that need to be cleaned up? I'd like to just explore a process for how we can do that. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Beasley Pittman, what have you been up to?
Thank you for this time. Thank you very much. I want to first give acknowledgement of one of our lifetime neighbors, Miss Jessie Young Adely. She passed away, seventy-six years old, lived in the city her entire life, has been an individual who's been an advocate on probably every committee and board that was in the city when she was extremely active, from the CRA to the Budget Board. She's just been very active in this community. So I wanted to bring it to our city's attention of her transitioning. She attended, listened to this Walker Elementary, Lincoln Park Elementary, Wingate when it was a middle school, okay? And she graduated from Diller High School, class of nineteen sixty-seven. So a, a woman that I love with all my heart, and I'm just blessed to have, God allowed for our paths to cross. Again, that's Jessie Young Adely. And we ask that you would whisper good thoughts and prayers for her, her family.
We'll keep her in mind during our moment of silence at the beginning of our meeting tonight.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And what I've been being productive with, I like the word productive. Busy makes me a little frazzled, so productive. Tuesday, September the seventeenth, I was, I had the honor of attending the retirement ceremony for our Assistant Fire Chief Gregory May. We attended that, my husband and I. We had a, it was a great ceremony, recognizing and acknowledging his service here at the city of Fort Lauderdale. Also, on Thursday, the ninth, we celebrated Spanish Heritage. We attended a luncheon for Judges Robert W. Lee and Judge Robert F. Fernandez in their retirement. And the mayor was there with us as well. A great opportunity to thank those judges for their service to our city, our county, and, and wishing them well with their next chapter in their lives. Also, on that same day, Thursday the nineteenth, we again had an opportunity, the Sprouts Mobile Food Market was again in our community. We were at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. It rained again, so we had to close down a little early, but we had great participants. And I always like to remind everyone, this is our opportunity, not only for District Three, but for the citywide, for our neighbors to be able to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables that are offered from a price from one dollar to five dollars. And it's a great opportunity overall. So a little further in my report here, we'll be talking about that opportunity coming up real soon and inviting everyone to be a part of it. On Friday, September twentieth, we had Carter Park Jams in the park at Carter Park. Another great evening, great participation. It had been several months since we had had the Carter Park Jam. And, oh, we, it was just a, it was a night that we asked everyone to dress in white, and it was just a sea of white. It was a beautiful evening that night. September twenty-first, I had the pleasure of attending an opportunity that shared safe water education and awareness. It was a collaboration with both our YMCA, Lee, Lee Mizell Community Center, along with the African American Research Library. So this was a great opportunity to remind our, our neighbors the importance of swim safety, being educated, and taking an opportunity to learn how to swim, parents and children alike. And that had a great turnout. Also, there, the author by the name of Johnny Christmas, he has a new book that was released entitled The Swim Team. So he was there signing books, giving them to the youth. So it was a very great, great event. So I'm very excited about that collaboration with the library, the African American Research Library, and our YMCA. And they have given a verbal commitment to keep this going, moving forward on an annual opportunity. Also, that same night, I attended the Urban League of River County's Varsity Red Gala. Again, me and the mayor was hanging out together. So we were able to enjoy that event as well. That was their fundraiser, the annual gala, and that went over quite well. Also, moving on to Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, I was on a webinar that was sponsored by the Florida League of Cities. It was regarding a grant assistance. Through the Florida Leagues of Cities, they're offering all the cities who are under membership with this grant assistance programming. And it's free to us. It's under our membership. So Susan, I'm going to be sharing that information. What was demonstrated and what was, what is being provided, I believe is going to really give Daphne some extra opportunity, great program. So I'll be sending that over to you as well. One other item that I wanted to share, Thursday, November, September twenty-sixth, that was the community conversation that we had with the mixed use zoning meeting that was held at the DDSB seven hundred Northwest Nineteenth Avenue. Because of the rain, that was the same night of the storm, in a sense. It was low participation, but it was a great conversation, great presentation. We did have some neighbors that came out to give their input about what they would like to see pertaining to the Davy Boulevard Master Plan. Okay? So what I did ask, and I'm asking now also, because of the storm, and there was a hesitance for people to participate, I would like to see us circle back to have that opportunity again for the community. Okay, and let's see here. Saturday, September twenty-eighth, the city, we were invited to participate in the gala for the Lynx Chapter here at Fort Lauderdale. Their gala was actually held at the Western on our beach. They celebrated fifty years of being in this community, giving opportunity and encouraging females, women, to follow their dreams, to be productive in our society. And they have made great strides and great impact, not only in our city, but nationally with their organization. And letting you know what's coming up, upcoming events. Saturday, October fifth, at Oswald Park, the Carlton B. Moore Foundation is sponsoring again, along with the city, the Carlton B. Moore Day. And it begins at three PM to eight PM. We're inviting everyone to come out. It gives highlights to the accomplishments of Commissioner Moore, and then also how they're reaching out to continue the community and the city to, in the spirit of Carlton's vision, to continue to move forward. They also give a scholarship on that day as well. October seventeenth, the Sprouts Bus Mobile Market, we will be at New Hope. That starts at four PM to six thirty. The address is thirteen twenty-one Northwest Sixth Street. Once again, this is open to the whole city. This is an opportunity to get your fresh fruits and vegetables, anywhere from one dollar to five dollars. Carter Park Jams will be back on October eighteenth. And then also, Friday, October twenty-fifth, at Riverland Park, we're having the Riverland Park Trick or Treat Event. And that's going to be, that will conclude my report today. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Tuesday, September seventeenth, I had the pleasure of speaking to members of the New River Business Exchange. It's a wonderful little group. We met at the Tower Club. And it's a very interesting group of business owners. They do a lot of networking and sharing and boosting each other's businesses. And I had never had that opportunity to meet with that group, so I thanked them for that opportunity. And it was a really nice, nice event. Wednesday, the eighteenth, we were at the Chamber of Commerce Director and Trustees Luncheon at the Riverside Hotel. It was a great little event, and it featured some really highlights of this past year, including, of course, the Panthers victory. And Matt Caldwell from the Panthers addressed the group. And of course, the Stanley Cup was there. Does that thing just tour for a whole year now? Like, what is that? Like, is that just, does this never-ending tour of that cup? Is that where it just keeps going?
It keeps going.
Keeps going, okay.
For one year.
For one year, it just keeps touring. Okay. Anyway, that was a really nice event. Thursday, September nineteenth, I had an opportunity to address the HRC, the Human Rights Campaign South Florida Federal Club, on the beach. Again, a really good gathering of folks that are very committed to making sure that they advocate for and fight for the LGBTQ community. That was a really very positive event. A pleasure to be with them. Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, we had the Heisinga Park Construction Kickoff Reception. And again, a good group downtown at the main, and looking forward to seeing that project moving forward. That also, that evening was also the South Middle River Civic Association Meeting. And that was a very energetic meeting. And it's always a pleasure to be with those folks in South Middle River. Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, we had the unveiling of the historical marker, Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Mayor, you were there. That was at the Parker. Just a wonderful, wonderful venue for our city. And I, it was just a proud moment to see that Florida Heritage Site marker be unveiled for that theater. A tremendous place in terms of our cultural history in Fort Lauderdale. And then I headed over to the Coral Ridge Captains Club. Those members meet regularly, and they have speakers from around the city come. And they had great questions. And we had a great discussion about, just about everything you can imagine happening in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Let's see, we also had kickoff meeting, well, that was also in Holiday Park that night for the garage. And I know that that's just the first of many meetings dealing with the proposed garage in Holiday Park. Thursday, September twenty-sixth, I had the pleasure of addressing.
What is, what is going on there with regard to the proposed garage in Holiday Park?
Well, this was just to explain it to the community residents. It was, weather-wise, not great, but I think there were only like five people. But again, just the initial steps of what they're trying to do, how they're going to put together the funding. It'll be the first of very many, very many public hearings and just discussions in terms of what's going to happen there. But that was the first. It was a kickoff meeting for staff Thursday, September 26th, had the pleasure of speaking to the Central Beach Alliance. And again, that is always a well-attended meeting. This one was on Zoom, which was great, because the weather was really abysmal that evening. But they had a great turnout, as always, even on Zoom. Friday, September 27th, was the Mark Quinn Sculpture Unveiling on La Solas Boulevard. How wonderful that was. Commissioner Sterman, Mayor, you were there as well. And it's always nice to see a significant piece of art like that placed in our city. And again, I wanted to thank Jeffrey Selzer and Bonnie Barnett for all of their work in making that come to fruition. It's a beautiful piece, really, a beautiful piece. And it looks really good, I think, in terms of a sense of place, right on that corner, across from Cheesecake Factory. Again, congratulations to all involved. With that, I look forward to having more significant pieces of public art placed throughout our city. It really does create a really nice sense of place for us.
Actually, it's the beginning of several art installations for that site, yeah.
Yep. And I think there's also going to be one over at La Solas Oceanside Park as well. And so there'll be a few all around. Tomorrow is actually a very significant day, because we're going to have the ribbon cutting for the La Solas Isles Undergrounding Project. That's a project that started about 84 years ago. And it's fun, well, I exaggerate, I'm sorry. I exaggerate. It did start a long, long time ago, when the city first decided to allow neighborhoods to assess themselves to underground all of their utilities. That is everything, AT&T, Comcast, FPNL. And this project is actually coming to fruition on those nine streets on the La Solas Isles. So we'll be there tomorrow, Mayor. I'm sure there'll be a lot of happy faces. It was a protracted project. But the good news is, I think we've learned a lot in this project. It took a few years. There's one street that still is going to be having a little bit of work to do, but that'll be concluded soon. But it's a good, good model. And I think that we did learn a lot. So all of the other neighborhoods that are in the queue for doing this, I think that it hopefully will move a lot faster. But again, that's tomorrow, that ribbon cutting for that project. This Saturday, actually Friday and Saturday, a two-part, the International Swimming Hall of Fame Induction Ceremony, which is always a very well-attended ceremony from folks all around the world that come to our city, because they want to honor these inductees into the International Swimming Hall of Fame. I will be participating Saturday evening, October 5th, in that ceremony. I'd like to add some folks to the moment of silence, to add to Commissioner Beasley Pittman's, two people that I would like to add. One is Jean Drake. I don't know how many of you knew Jean, but I will tell you, I met her when the city was involved with the moving of the Annie Beck House to Middle River Terrace Park. She was sort of nicknamed the treasure trove of Fort Lauderdale history, or really was a pioneer. She passed away last week, just shy of her 90th birthday. And this woman had a long, long history, and actually was very friendly with Annie Beck. She and her husband, Phil, had a store, a clothing store, that was very well-known on La Solas, way back, like 70 years ago. Anyway, she did just recently pass away, pass away, and hopefully we can remember Jean Drake. She was really one of our pioneers, and contributed so much to our city. And I also want to mention the passing of Brian Yukna. Paula Yukna is an amazing activist on the beach. She also serves as the Chair of our Homelessness Task Force. She's also on the Board of Directors of the Central Beach Alliance. And unfortunately, just a few weeks ago, her son, Brian, passed away. Very, very sad, and it's been very difficult for Paula. And she's just such a wonderful person, that I would like also for us to remember her son, Brian, when we take that moment of silence this evening. And then lastly, for those of our residents who will be selling, celebrating the Jewish High Holy Days, I would like to mention that starting sundown tomorrow evening, on the Jewish calendar of the year 5785, Rosh Hashanah begins tomorrow evening at sundown, and then that High Holy Day period concludes with Yom Kippur. So for all that are celebrating that, I wish you a very sweet and a very happy, happy New Year. And just last, I want to say thank you to Alan and Dr. Gassman. We've had a lot of little issues popping up, and a lot of people very passionate about their streets, and something that we talked about tonight, today earlier with the flooding. A lot of, just a little, a lot of anxiety in District Two. And I will just tell you that Colonel Dodd and Dr. Gassman have really gone above and beyond, as all of the folks in Public Works, in assisting my office and getting the answers to folks. And I'm, I'm very appreciative of that. So thank you. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sterman?
Four things. First three are going to be easy. Last one might be, I'm going to keep the last one as positive as I can. I'm going to keep positive with everything. But I think this is exciting, the first thing that came across my desk. And we alluded it to, I alluded it to it when we spoke about the flooding and all. David, did everybody get a copy of this? Oh, wait a second.
What are we looking at? What are you holding back on us?
No, 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 it's very positive.
Playground helps control flooding in historic.
Remember, we spoke about particularly in areas such as Edgewood, River Oaks, what we do when we imagine, reimagine some of our parks and whatnot. And this came across my desk by a constituent. And like, we're going to be redoing Floyd Hall Park, which is a perfect opportunity to do something like that. And when we redo that, we should, you know, climate-smart playgrounds. Hoboken, New Jersey has done something like that. Underwater storage, being able to absorb some of the flooding within the park when we reimagine that, up to 2 million gallons of stormwater. Forward-thinking some of the things that we reimagine. And this had come up, like I mentioned, originally when we're talking about Floyd Hall, maybe we could get some grants, some FEMA money, it would be a bit available for some programs like that. So Susan, if you, if you could look forward into-
Like an underground cistern or something?
Something like, things like that, or you know, reservoir-
Like they have an Istanbul?
Yeah. But you know, when you're thinking of, especially in Edgewood, if you could do something when you reimagine the park, you know, we already talked about the lake and all that, how it's over capacity, thinking outside the box. Number two, again, a constituent wanted me to bring this up, and I'm just going to mention briefly about increasing boat pump-out stations for boaters. There's only two pump-out stations with over 50,000 boats. So there's an email that we got, Susan, and I will, if I haven't done already, I will forward that to you, about requests from a constituent to see how we could increase that. And if you could get back to me on that. I said four things, I'm halfway done.
Well, just to that point, I think it's really important, because the majority of the pollution in our, in our streams and canals is because people dump in them. And, and you know, there has to be a culture in this community where you don't dump your effluent into the, into the waters that's untreated. So having two pump stations is really totally inadequate, you're right.
Correct. And that's the point. So, so you would, okay, I appreciate your support on that, Mr. Mayor. So Susan, just the point. Number three, Susan, one more thing for you. Could you just update it? You've, you've given me some updates, but for the community, that sewer spill on the intercoastal, if you could just, or that whole thing?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Alan Dodd. Is Alan, yes, he is here, to give an update.
Mayor Commissioners, Alan Dodd, Public Works. So yesterday, a little after 3:00 PM, we had a contractor who was working on the effluent force main project down by the county's convention center and GTL, was doing a directional bore to relocate a security camera and a fiber optic cable. They-
They sprung a leak.
Hit the effluent pipe, the 54-inch pipe, that was underneath where they were doing the boring.
And they don't examine the area first before they drill?
We, we are still investigating it, but from what we know right now, they did not have the proper locates when they did it. They also did not coordinate, it was a sub to our prime contractor, they did not coordinate with them to let them know they were going to be doing this work.
This is exactly, not to interrupt you, this is exactly how the problem we had up at the northern end of the city when we broke into our freshwater pipe, and the whole city shut down. I mean, subcontractors, hiring subcontractors, hiring subcontractors who are completely incompetent, who don't know what they're doing and putting this community at risk. When is this practice going to stop? I mean, I'm not faulting you, I'm just saying, when are we going to have controls in place that we don't have people who would just go around digging holes and drilling into places without first examining where the, this is a 56-inch pipe.
Yes, Mayor. And we don't control which subcontractors they have. This was a subcontractor who had done this work for the port, and that is why they were selected, was because they were familiar with operations within the port, had the right clearances to do it. So that, they were a reputable company, but they absolutely did not follow procedures in this case, which led to them piercing the pipe from GTL to the injection wells.
So if you could just give us an update on where we stand right now on that?
Okay, so when we became aware of it, we had to do some investigation. At first, we thought it was a smaller pipe coming from the cruise ship terminals. We termed it wasn't. And approximately 10 o'clock, 10:30 last night, we made the decision to shut down the pipe, and we diverted all flows out of GTL to the emergency outfall going into the intercoastal. We also started trying to isolate it to reduce the pressures in the pipe so that we could conduct repairs. This morning, we had a meeting, and we agreed upon a course of action, starting with putting in, right now, we're having pressure coming out of the wells that is going into that pipe and still pressurizing it, which is overflowing onto the, to the roadways. So we agreed on putting in two line stops. The primary one is on the 54-inch pipe itself. A quicker one that we're also trying to do is on a 30-inch pipe that connects into one of the injection wells that we were unable to control flows from. That is going on right now. We hope to have it completed by around midnight tonight. As soon as they have that done, they are tankering the sewage off of the streets right now. And they will clean up the area so they can start excavation and get down to the pipe. We got a repair kit for the, for the 54-inch pipe from Miami-Dade County earlier today. And they will start installing that tomorrow, or this evening, as soon as we have the site stabilized. It will take 24 to 36 hours for the repair of that pipe to be completed.
So for the time being, so we have spillage going onto the street, like by Eisenhower in that area?
No, it is not on Eisenhower. It is on 20th Street, near 14th Ave, and then going to the west. So it's behind where the shops are located.
But that's, that's treated, though?
It is fully treated effluent that is coming out of the, but this is, is now, it's back flowing from the injection well. So it's been down in the ground, and now it's coming back up. So it's, it's a little smellier than if it's just coming out of the plant itself.
Now, that should be going injected deep down. That, that's where it should have been going, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, we also have stuff going into the intercoastal, too?
Yeah, because we cannot use that single pipe, all of the sewage that is going into GTL is being treated, and then is being pumped through the emergency outfall into the intercoastal, which is why last night we put a precautionary waterways advisory in place.
Okay, is there redundancy when that breaks? We have more than one that goes into the well? Or that's the only, like, one main that comes out of GTL?
The, the project that we are building right now is to build the redundant line, so that if this were to happen, we would switch over to the second line.
But for the moment being-
But right now, there is only one pipe.
Okay. And a timeline that that might be, like a day or two more, or what do you think?
So if we get the line stop in place, we can cut off the flows this evening, which we hope to do by midnight. We will go then into excavating and repairing the pipe, and we think that will be 24 to 36 hours to get the pipe back in service.
Okay, are we, are we now subject to state fines and, and things like that?
Yes. And I think I copied everyone on the text this morning that we sent an email to the prime contractor, letting them know that they would be responsible for not just the repairs and the cleanup, but our fines.
Okay.
Yes. And, and I will say, the contractor has been extremely responsive to all of the records ahead of them. They understand that they are completely responsible for it. They are trying to work to a solution as fast as they can.
Wow, what a, what a shitty situation.
And I will add, though, that there have been no disruptions of service from water or wastewater. I think we had a complaint this morning that someone thought that toilets weren't flushing because of that.
We just passed a resolution that, that our behavior on the day-
Code of Conduct.
I'm going to talk about that in a second, but I'm going to be a-
No more four-letter words, please.
I'm going to be a granddad in April, so I'm getting my stupid dad jokes to be stupid granddad jokes. So I'm getting ready for that. Okay. And, Mr. Mayor, anything on this topic, before I do my last thing that you-
Go ahead.
Can we, can I ask a question of Colonel Dodd?
Sure, go ahead.
Did we have any say at all in the sub that was used? And this was Rickman, right, the contractor?
It is. And we do not have a say on who the sub is. However, as I said, this sub is the one that normally does this type of work for the port. It was inside the port footprint. So when they went to get them, they had a good reputation. We had no problems with the sub that they had selected.
Okay, but so we had no say?
No, we do not.
Okay. And have they spoken to us at all about what happened here, what the problem was?
We have had a little conversation with Rickman about it. However, the majority of conversation has really been on how do we fix it? You know, we, we will absolutely investigate more and uncover everything later on. But for this morning, the focus is how do we get the pipe back in service so that we can cut on the flows through the outfall?
The reason I'm asking is I remember when we had that really awful situation, Mayor, that you referenced years ago. We found out that our mapping system really wasn't adequate, that we just didn't really know where things were located. Is that part of the problem here, or not part of the problem, or this is just someone didn't bother to check?
The location of this pipe was well-known to us, and they should have known the pipe was there. I cannot tell you why they did not take proper actions and why they decided to bore through where they obviously should not have.
Was there a readily available tree stump, like we were able to use in, what was that? In 2018, didn't we use a tree stump?
And I think somebody had belt buckle or something.
Was there a readily available tree stump to help us?
They, they didn't use a tree stump. They did try plugging it in that same manner, but it was unsuccessful.
Unsuccessful.
We have a tree ordinance, we're not allowed to use tree stumps for pipe breaks.
We haven't passed that yet. That's tonight. Okay, well, ridiculous situation nonetheless. But it, and hopefully, though, everyone, have you heard back from that memo to them about how they will be responsible, not just for making sure everything is corrected, but also for any fines that we might incur?
Alan, I don't know if they've replied yet, but-
I, I have not seen where they have responded directly to the email, where we put them on notice. However, in the meeting that we did have, they fully agreed that they are responsible for everything that occurs as a result of this incident.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Continue, Commissioner.
One more item. Mr. Mayor, I am going to ask that you not interrupt me while I do this. This is not going to be easy. I'm going to be positive. I'm going to take the high road here. And I'm going to, I'm going to, don't worry, I'm not going to be controversial. I just, I'm going to take the high road. I love the city. I always wanted to be positive. Those who know me know that, as president of my neighborhood for 14 years, I was always positive as a candidate, and now as an elected official. You know, I avoid personal attacks on people. You know, obviously, the whole community, you try, you would hope that would follow suit, but it doesn't always happen. But we always try, especially in my meetings, to have, have respect, no personal attack, no disparaging remarks, something that we don't tolerate in my district. But we now passed a code of conduct. Mr. City Attorney, I just want to do me a favor. We spoke about this two weeks ago. Once again, give us a definition of disparaging that's part of our code of conduct.
Dispar, I mean-
You, we spoke about this at length. Remember, John and you spoke about it at length?
Well, we spoke about the word mean-spirited, which was John's favorite word.
Or maybe, what, what's the word in our code of conduct?
We have several. They say, as an appointed board or committee member, I will refrain from inappropriate language, including statements that are malicious, threatening, slanderous, disparaging, mean-spirited, vulgar, or abusive.
And disparaging, what did, what did we decide?
Disparaging means to accuse somebody of not being fully able to speak for themselves, to downplay them, to-
Well, yeah, there was something in there, you said, that, that was, whether it's true or not, but it's something that's meant to harm somebody.
Disparaging is, is to do this.
Meant to- Meant to harm somebody.
It's to belittle somebody.
Right, right, right. Okay, I'm not going to take any action, but all I want to say is we passed this two weeks ago and before the ink even dried. Well, the other question, we and I had spoken about this a couple days ago, is this covered just within the confines of a meeting, or if somebody uses that language in public or posts online and in social media, they still, is it still binding them?
It covers a board member, whether they're at a board meeting or not. They're an appointed board member, so they're representing the city.
And if they speak, and if they speak online and in social media, it would cover that?
Yes, but let me point something out. This just passed, as you know. I haven't gotten the ordinances yet and the resolutions to sign, but it's adopted.
Is there a specific incident that happened?
No, 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 I'm almost done, I'll just say one more minute.
Do you have them?
Okay, and you mentioned last time, and you made this abundantly clear, that they're bound, even if they signed it or they didn't, they were bound as of the time we passed it, they were bound.
Correct, but I do want to make sure that these people, that it gets out to every board member, so they're aware or should have been aware, and I presume that's already happened.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to make a big deal about it, I'm just going to say one thing, and I'm hoping that we, going forward, that this behavior does not happen. I'm not going to make a hold-to-do about it, but I would hope that, this came from your campaign, sir.
Came from my campaign?
Yes, and I warned you about this a year ago, your campaign treasurer making remarks that were, fall into this exact category. And I'm not going to take action, but I just want you to please, I mean, I love this city. We do not need to be using disparaging remarks, I mean, attacking family members, I mean, I could share with you what was said, and I'm hoping, and I know if you're a man of honor, that please don't have your campaign attack and continue this type of behavior.
I apologize if that happened, because I have known, this is the first time I'm hearing about it.
If I share that with you, would you please just...
Absolutely.
Okay, I do appreciate that. I thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Again, in the spirit of going forward, I thank you for that. I thank you.
All righty. Just a few things I'd like to add to the number of things that happened the last couple of weeks. September 18th, I attended the Sister City event with our folks from Germany at the Tower Club. The council general was there, and it was essentially an opportunity to meet with civic leaders as well as business individuals in promotion of our relationship with our sister city, Duisburg, in Germany. The same day, as Commissioner Beasley Pittman indicated, we had the opportunity to attend a luncheon in support of the retirement of two of our judges, one of whom happens to be a good friend of mine, Judge Lee. And it was great to meet with all the other judges that attended, but certainly, their service to our community has been appreciated, and we thank them for their service. On September 20th, I attended the Hispanic Heritage Chamber of Commerce banquet. It's the first annual, there were about 150 people there, it was really a great opportunity to connect with the business community in a very, very, very much growing Hispanic presence here in our city, and it was an opportunity to welcome people of all cultural backgrounds to come together and to support one another. As, again, Commissioner Beasley Pittman indicated, we attended the Urban League banquet on September 21st. It was the red party, I wore red. And it was a fun event, a lot of people from a complete cross-section of our community attended, and it was an awards night, so congratulations to all those who participated and those who received the awards. On the 23rd, we did a ribbon cutting of a new business over in District 1, My Dentist of Fort Lauderdale. Very nice couple who own the office, and just wonderful opportunity to welcome another business in our community. And also, on the 24th, we had the, as Vice Mayor indicated, the kickoff party for Heisinger Park. This is going to be a very important transformation of Heisinger Park. First of all, people should understand, this is a park that's owned by the Downtown Development Authority, and it's under their guidance and direction that the transformation is taking place. Many people seem to think that we own it, and there are a lot of opinions being expressed as to what should be done with it. I think in the past couple of years, the DDA has reached out to the community to talk about options and opportunities that could be had there, and today, we're going to be seeing a really wonderful, wonderful park that's going to be much more useful, much more activated, and there will also be a new restaurant that's going to be located there. Just yesterday, several of us, including Commissioner Herbst, myself, and Commissioner Sturman, we welcomed Rabbi Mendel to City Hall to begin the celebration of Rosh Hashanah, which, what is the year again? 50?
5785. You know, it only feels like it's 5780, maybe. It's incredible how the years just fly by, right?
Anyway, he treated us with some challah and some other things, and I want to be, I'm very thankful to the community for having presented that to the city on behalf of the Jewish community. So looking forward to the next couple of weeks, we have the undergrounding completion ceremony that Vice Mayor talked about, the Carlton Moore Family and Friends Day at Oswald Park, looking forward to that, the Ishoph Ceremony. I wonder if all the great swimmers from this past Olympics are going to be there, hopefully. And last but not least, I want to welcome everybody on October 9th to attend the State of the City address. This is an annual event, which we've had, God, since I can recall, since, for many, many years, and this year, again, is going to be at the Parker at 7:00. But before that, the city is going to be hosting a reception at the New War Memorial Auditorium. I invite everybody to come there and see what has happened. This is the creation of some, probably one of the best public-private partnerships the city has entered into, where the Panther Organization not only created the ice skating rinks for the public to enjoy, but also their investment in completely transforming the building we all know as the War Memorial Auditorium. When you go in there, you're going to be amazed at what they've created, and I can't wait till they start activating the center, because there's going to be wonderful concerts there, wonderful events, and hopefully, this year, we'll start to see those things happening. So I want to thank the Panther Organization, and again, welcome everybody, October 9th, again, 5:00 PM for the reception at War Memorial, and 7:00 for the State of the City address. So with that having been said...
Can I just add one more thing?
Yeah.
Go ahead. I'd like to echo what the Vice Mayor said, I want to wish people of all faiths a very Happy New Year. I know it's 5785, but Steve, are you having the same problem I have? Every time you sign your name, you keep putting 5784 over and over again.
My checks, I do that all the time.
And the banks keep rejecting it?
It's just crazy, yeah, it's just crazy.
So what happened in year one?
I think that...
What was the year one?
I'm going to send you to Hebrew school, you'll learn everything, okay?
It's not the beginning of Jew, the beginning of history as a whole, listen, I...
I don't know, what happened in year one? Is that when Moses got the Ten Commandments? I don't know what...
No, 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 I think it goes back to Adam and Eve.
Okay.
Correct?
Did you know that Adam and Eve were not Jewish?
No, right, we spoke about that yesterday, that was fine of interest.
Can we just move on?
Okay, Happy New Year, everybody, thank you again.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, you have an update?
Yeah, I have a couple reports, and coincidentally, October 1, it's Happy Fiscal New Year Day. So, yeah, Happy New Year to all that celebrate, and it's primarily the accountants in the I'd like to just announce the two walk-ons. First is the one relating to schools, and that's going to really enable staff to advocate on the city and our residents' behalf with the school board as it relates to the redefining. And also, happy to report that we have a walk-on for Dottie Mancini Park this evening.
Congratulations.
Next, I think I forwarded to each of you a copy of the resolution that Oakland Park has recently adopted or will recently, or will be adopting related to tri-party educational mitigation agreements. These were agreements that were entered into in around 2005, when schools were critically overcrowded. This impacts the cities of Coconut Creek, Dana Beach, Davie, Fort Lauderdale, Lauderdale Lakes, Lauderdale, Miramar, Oakland Park Plantation, and Pembroke Pines. And as a matter of fact, the Clerk forwarded to all of you today, Lauderdale passed a resolution recently with that. If you have an opportunity to review it, if you give me feedback, we can bring that back, a similar resolution for the city of Fort Lauderdale. And Oakland Park has already advocated for this at the Regional Planning Council and at the County Commission, and they will be bringing it to the school board at a future meeting.
Okay, any questions of the City Manager?
I have a couple other quick reports.
Oh, sure.
So is that direction to proceed with that?
Yes.
Did I see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. And, you know, if anyone is interested in us moving the November 7th commission meeting to 11/6 because of the conflict with Riverwalk, we can bring a Riverwalk light-up event, we can bring that back to the commission.
So it's a pleasure of the commission.
Nope.
No.
Nope.
That's ridiculous. The day after Election Day, you want to...
No, keep it at Thursday.
Easy enough? And then I'd just also like to report that the Stanley Cup did make...
Wait a minute, that's just two votes.
Okay.
Were your two loudest votes, though?
Yeah, definitely loud. What about the rest of the commission?
Well, it doesn't affect me, so...
Oh, there you go.
Aren't you going to be partying somewhere?
Oh, somewhere, yes.
No, you'll be partying with me.
Yeah, well, we have a, and Commissioner Herbst, what are your thoughts?
Get up.
Okay, all right, so it's the seventh.
Got it, and then just the report that the Stanley Cup did make a appearance at the City Hall Garage on September 25th, and we had employees able, and David was there with all his Panther regalia to take some pictures, so that's all I have.
He'll never forget that incredible playoff game, right?
Okay, so there being, any further, Mr. Ansbro?
I will have comments when we do the homeless ordinance.
Okay, so if there's no further business of the commission, I conclude this conference meeting. Now, we have a CRA meeting, do you want to do it now or do you want to do it later?
Now, people are waiting.
Hey, hey, you're awfully loud tonight.
That's okay.
All right, this begins the CRA board meeting, so Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Herbst, Vice Chair Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Chair Trentalis?
Here. So we have M1, motion approving the minutes for the September 3, 2024 Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis?
Yes, and M1 is now approved. R1, resolution providing a $1.5 million increase in development incentive program forgivable loan funding to the Wright Dynasty LLC for the Wright Dynasty project located at 1217 to 1223 Sistrunk Boulevard, and authorizing the executive director to execute any and all related instruments and delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions. I think I had someone who signed up for this. Dennis, you're just here to support it, right? Where are you? There you are. Eric Kane, same thing, right? Okay, and Kurt Petgrave, just here to support, right? And how about Terry Hardman? Okay, okay, so someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Are there any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of Board of Commissioners of Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency amending Resolution Number 22-18 and Resolution Number 20-12 approving an increase in the forgivable loan from $3,500 to $5 million under the development incentive program, approving the amended letter of intent providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes, and all the best.
Chair Trentalis?
Yes, and that resolution is approved. Congratulations, good luck. Let's make it happen. R2, resolution waiving the maximum funding amount and approving a $750,000 property and business improvement program forgivable loan and a $50,000 Streetscape Enhancement Program forgivable loan to West Sistrunk Plaza, or Plaz, is that a typo? LLC for Ponderosa Plaza located at 2201 Sistrunk Boulevard, authorizing the executive director to execute any and all related instruments and delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduce.
No one signed up to speak? Anyone have any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency waiving the maximum funding amount under the agency's property and business investment improvement program for West Sistrunk Plaza LLC, approving a forgivable loan in the amount of $750,000 under the property and business investment improvement program, and approving a forgivable loan in the amount of $50,000 under the Streetscape Enhancement Program, approving the property and business investment improvement agreement and Streetscape Enhancement Program agreement, authorizing the executive director to execute all related instruments, delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis?
Yes, and R2 is now approved. Our final item on the agenda is PH1. This is a public hearing accepting the development proposal of CFTN and Beverly Chambers and approving the sale of Community Redevelopment Agency property located at 724 Northwest 15th Way for affordable housing, authorizing the executive director to execute any and all related instruments and delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions. Public hearing is now open. No one has signed up to speak. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, please call the roll for the closing of public hearing.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. How, what kind of...
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution, okay. Will someone please introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
It's been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency accepting the proposal of CFTN and Beverly Chambers and approving the sale of real property located at 724 Northwest 15th Way, Fort Lauderdale, Florida 33311, delegating authority to the executive director to execute the commercial contract addendum, conveyance instruments and related documents, delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Chair Glassman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. Is there any further business of the CRA?
Mayor, if I can just say something, I'm really excited about everything that has gone forward tonight. Just want to make it known that each one of these items are individuals who actually were born and raised in District 3, and I'm really excited for this opportunity moving forward in this direction. Thank you for your due diligence, your passion, and your commitment to bring opportunities to District 3. Thank you.